Councilmember Baines. Bretta Feld.
Yeah.
Capriolio. Chavez. Olivier. Brandau.
Here.
President Soria.
Here. Next, we have our invocation, which I believe was Pastor Tate Heel Senior from Bethel Temple Church of God in Christ. You can come forward and if we can, please stand and remain standing for the flag salute. Thank you.
With your heads bowed, dear heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your manifold and abundant blessings. Thank you for life, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings and our duties. Thank you for the ability to be involved in this useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you, Lord, for the freedom to embrace you or to reject you, and yet thank you for loving us all from your boundless mercy and grace. Lord, we ask you to give us direction and wisdom. And therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Grant them a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our people. Give them an insatiable thirst for justice and righteousness and the confidence in what is good and fitting. Grant to each the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. Give them individually a personal peace in their lives and joy in the task that they accomplish. Finally, I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what you would like them to do and what pleases you and what would benefit those who live and work in this city of Fresno. We ask it all in your holy and righteous name. Amen and amen.
City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to report.
Do any councilmembers have any changes to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Olivier. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have consent calendar. We'll go out to, well, first, is there any items that would like to be pulled by this council? Councilmember Bretta Feld.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item 1C and 1N. N is in Nancy.
So item 1C and item 1N will be pulled. And I'll go ahead and pull item 1M. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wish to comment on the remainder of the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Capriolio. Second by Councilmember Olivier. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries 7-0. Now we'll go on to the ceremonial presentations. We'll kick it off with the proclamation of Disability Awareness Month and recognition of the Disability Advisory Commission Award recipients, the mayor's office and city manager's office.
Good morning. We're here for a proclamation for Disability Awareness Month. Each year, we celebrate Disability Awareness Month in October, and it brings attention to the important role that people with disabilities play in all aspects of our life. The city has partnered with people with disabilities advising them since the 88 Act passed in 1991 and was formalized in 2008 as a Disability Advisory Commission. We'll have some members here today. It's a decade-long relationship. And the DAC, again, is a seven-member body made up of committee leaders appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. The commission represents the many years of professional work and personal experience with a range of disabilities. And this year, the Disability Awareness Month proclamation will be received by the Vocation Plus Connections, Inc., and since 19, I'm sorry, 19, I'm dating myself here, maybe dating Pulk. Since 2016, has partnered with the Fresno Police and Fire to improve the relationship between people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, DD, and first responders. And I want to make a shout-out to Shannon Mahal, as in Mahal Drive, who's been our leader of ADA. I've met you as a councilmember. You've done a great job. And the city of Fresno has so many facilities and buildings, and it's important that everybody with any disability has equal access. So thank you and thank you, commission members. We'll let you say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Brand. So first, I want to talk a little bit about Vocations Plus Connections. And here we have Shelley Schmidt and Ashley Rains, who are part of that program. And they've done something really unique. In the past two years, they've partnered with our Fresno Police Department to improve relationships with people with intellectual and developmental disabilities, which we know we hear about in the news from time to time. And what they've done is they've helped our police department to develop tips and training for how to better connect with folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities, autism spectrum disorder, Down syndrome, those kinds of categories. And beyond that, they partnered with us to do training for the community. How do you have a safe interaction with law enforcement? And then beyond that, they started setting up social events so that the first time that folks who have these kinds of disabilities come in contact with a law enforcement officer or a first responder, firefighter, is not during an incident. It's something social and casual and safe. So they've really done a fantastic job, and I'm glad that they're receiving our proclamation because they've done so much work. Do you want to talk a little bit about your organization and what you do? I will say that they have a program, Snacks to You, that received our organizational award about five years ago. So they've really been involved with the city for a long time. So I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Shannon, and thank you, Mayor Brand. Vocation Plus Connections, we are a vocational day program that work with adults living with developmental disabilities. And it is an honor to work with the city. And all of our services here, the regional center and Fresno State and all the different services provided. And we do see change, and that's because of all the people in our community that are open to trying new things and meeting new people. And it's a very exciting time, and so we are honored to be here. Thank you.
So why don't we have you come in close? We'll take a photo with the proclamation as the city clerk reads the proclamation into the record.
You got it down.
Whereas every year since 1945, the President of the United States has proclaimed national observance in October to promote the employment of individuals with disabilities. And whereas 17% of the residents in the city of Fresno and 50% of the residents over the age of 65 have one or more disabilities, and whereas attitudinal barriers can hinder people with disabilities from being fully integrated into the community life, and whereas the city of Fresno recognizes that people with disabilities are a community resource which should not be overlooked or underutilized. And whereas the city of Fresno Disability Advisory Commission serves the citizens of Fresno by providing the city with guidance on a wide range of disability-related issues, and through its annual achievement award recognizes an individual and an organization who has improved the quality of life for persons with disabilities in the city of Fresno. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand, and the Fresno City Council do hereby proclaim the month of October 2018 to be Disability Awareness Month in the city of Fresno.
All right, so next, I'd like to introduce our Disability Advisory Commissioners who are here today. Our chair is Mary Beth Randall, and I'm going to give you the mic and let you introduce who's here from the commission as well.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to thank everyone for being here. And I would like to recognize the folks that are also here from our commission. Francis Reyes, who's the co-chair of the Disability Advisory Commission. We have Heather Flores, Susan Coulter, and Janelle Pitt, who are also members of the Disability Advisory Commission. And we're glad that all of them could come. Today, we honor a group of people who not only live, work, and play hard, but they also go above and beyond to make the city of Fresno better for everyone. People like these have gone beyond measure to make the lives of individuals with disabilities changed forever so that we can be members of the community in every way that is possible. The city of Fresno recognizes individuals and organizations who, through their advocacy and actions, have served to make the lives of people with individuals better for better. Our first award is going to go to our individual for this year, and it'll be Yonos Paulos.
We're going to take a quick picture, and then I'm going to tell you why Yonos is just an amazing individual. So Yonos Paulos is someone who we've seen at our advisory commission meetings for many, many years. And he is a tireless advocate for homeless veterans in the city of Fresno. And what's really unique about Yonos is he is the embodiment of a grassroots advocate. He doesn't have an organization he works with. He's pounding the pavement. He's out there talking to real individuals, connecting people on an individual basis, one by one, with the resources in the community. And the past couple of years, he's also taken to looking at transportation issues citywide and has done volunteerism with the Council on Government and looking at transportation. And if there's a civic meeting, Yonos is there. And he's there talking about homeless veterans and saying, "What about our homeless veterans? What about our homeless veterans? We need to do better by them." And I just can't speak highly enough of Yonos. And he's become someone that I know that the commission sees as a friend. So thank you for all you do.
I'm honored. First of all, I want to thank God for giving me this servant heart and my beautiful family and my gorgeous wife, Christina, for putting up with me. I want to thank councilmembers and our mayor, Lee Brand. Thank you. And all of you here today. This work, I'm a man without a cell phone and without a card. I am live. You see me on the bus, off the bus. I'm called the guy that does the veterans. That's my name. And I volunteered to the VA for two years, so I know all about their benefits. And I'm a member, like, for SS Tag, Council of Governments Subcommittee. I've been there for a year and a half. I'm just really blessed I'm able to assist our veterans. They deserve the best, okay? Because without them, we wouldn't have the freedom that we have today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Yonos. We're glad to have given you this award. Our next award goes to Geekwise, and they are receiving the organizational reward.
Thank you very much. So here we have Teri Solis, who is the champion of geeks, and Beth Dillon, the student success specialist for Geekwise Academy. And, you know, Geekwise Academy is really interesting. They're an offshoot of Bitwise Industries, which we may have heard about in downtown Fresno. I'm not sure if you've seen any of their colorful buildings. So what Geekwise does is it provides technology and coding courses that open up pathways for entry-level jobs for people in our community, trying to keep Fresno folks local. And what's really neat is that they have opened their arms as well to folks with disabilities. Now, the nominator said that Geekwise, when asked to provide interpreters and accommodations for students who are deaf and hard of hearing, that they did without a second glance, without a question. Now, I also know personally that Beth has called me on multiple occasions, said, "Shannon, we have this kind of disability, person with this disability. What do we do? What do we need to know? Can we do this? Can we do that?" And we've sat down at least three times, talking about different kinds of accommodations and how to approach people in a respectful way. And it's been really neat to see the way that Geekwise has opened up employment opportunities for all people in our community. So thank you for what you do.
We're just really grateful for this recognition. And honestly, like, me and Teri are here, but it's a whole team effort, Geekwise, Bitwise, everybody, and individuals like Shannon and Yonos, who always is sending me emails, letting me know all the opportunities for individuals, you know, in our community, at Geekwise, many veterans, and making sure, you know, anybody who comes through our doors, that this is a place that they can feel welcome and empowered.
Thank you very much. All right, and last, we have our City of Fresno Employee Award.
And that recipient is Desi Garcia.
I have to say that this is also one of my favorite days of the year because we get to talk about the accessibility champions that we have in the city of Fresno staff. And you really are, and I see in the audience several folks who I've worked with individually as well, and you could also be receiving this award. But we saw that Desi was really unique because Desi was working in the housing division, doing a housing rehab specialist. You're now moved to a different role, right? And at that time, he was doing a, working with a homeowner on a simple improvement. And when he met with that homeowner, he saw that a simple improvement wasn't actually what this individual needed. He had a mobility disability, lived with a wheelchair, and couldn't even get around and out, in and out of his own home. And a lot of folks could have said, "Well, that's too bad," but he didn't. He came back and he advocated with his supervisor and said, "What else can we do? What else can we do? That's not enough. Let's do more." And that is really what makes Desi an accessibility champion in my book. And that's what the Disability Advisory Commission saw as they looked at the nomination and said, "That one person that you've helped is representative of many other types of situation and the kind of attitude that we really want to honor and recognize from our City of Fresno staff." So thank you, Desi.
Thank you very much, everyone, everyone who's here. I'll display this award proudly, but I'll always bear in mind, it was a team effort. Everyone on the housing staff that made it possible and put forward the blessing of making Joseph Roman's life that much easier, and even in his own home. So, thank you.
And lastly, I want to thank Mayor Brand, the city council members and city manager's office because none of this would be possible without your ongoing support. It's been a decade of our Disability Advisory Commission being here, and I thank you so much for that because the choices you make really do impact individuals in our community. So a round of applause for our leadership.
Thank you all.
Next, we have the proclamation of Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week, and I am the sponsor of that, but I will call, who is in the audience? Let me see. Jennifer and Tim Byrne from the Code Enforcement Manager.
Good morning, everyone. It is my pleasure and honor to be able to have both Jennifer Clark, Director of DARM, and Tim Byrne, who is our Code Enforcement Manager, to receive this proclamation. We do it every year, but every year, the second week of October, we take time to recognize the hard work of our code enforcement officers. I don't know, do we have code enforcement officers in here? Any? Yeah, let's give it up for our code enforcement officers. You are all our eyes and ears in our community, and you guys do some very, very critical work to help address vacant building issues, trash, you know, illegal dumping, tall grass, weeds, inoperable vehicles. And those are just a few amongst the multitude of issues that many of our neighborhoods here in the city of Fresno have. You guys really provide invaluable work to our neighbors, to the residents that we all represent. And we really want to take the time, I personally wanted to take the time, to appreciate all of you because the work that we do up here couldn't be accomplished without your work. So we are a team here in the city of Fresno, and we appreciate you. You are the ones that help improve quality of life in the neighborhood. Especially in those neighborhoods, many of them south of Fresno, that have even greater challenges. So I want to thank all of you, really from the bottom of my heart, for the hard work. I know that over the last year, you guys have been in much transition, in training mode, making sure that you guys have the tools, the skills, to be able to address these issues. So again, I just want to say thank you so much for the work that you do.
Let me echo the sentiments for Council President that code enforcement people are the most underappreciated, I believe, employees in the city of Fresno. Give yourself a hand. You guys literally shape the image of the city of Fresno. And a lot of people here survived the Great Recession where people in code and other departments were decimated. And you guys carried a big burden on your shoulders for some really difficult years. And through my rental inspection program, I've met some really good people as a councilmember and as the mayor. And you've got my wholehearted appreciation for what you guys do. And it's an honor to be here to honor the Code Enforcement Week and code enforcement officers.
Great. So we'll go ahead and have the clerk read the proclamation for the record. I do want to ask all the code enforcement officers that are in the room to come on up. I want a picture with you guys to be able to, so that the cameras can recognize you and the people out there can see who are boots on the ground doing the hard work.
Whereas the state of California has proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. And whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of residents in the city of Fresno through enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances dealing with the various issues of buildings, zoning, housing, environmental health, and life safety. And whereas the code enforcement officers have challenging and demanding rules and often do not receive magnification, uh, recognition for their job in improving quality of life for the residents and business of local communities. And whereas the role of the many code enforcement officers has expanded in recent years with jurisdictions increasingly relying on the expertise and training of code enforcement officers in their community. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, and ensuring safety and preserving property values through knowledge, training, and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. And whereas the code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in the city of Fresno and regularly interact with the public and variety of federal, state, county, and local officials in their capacity role as enforcement officers. And whereas the city of Fresno wants to recognize and honor the code enforcement officers that serve our community and acknowledge their role in leading the way to improve the quality of life within our community. And whereas that the city council calls upon the city of Fresno residents to join in recognizing and expressing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service to the individuals who serve our Code Enforcement Officers. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fresno Mayor and the City Council does hereby proclaim the second week of October 2018 as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the City of Fresno.
Mayor, Mayor Brand, Code people, if you guys would, if you guys, the Code, our Code people, could you guys turn around and face us, please? We have a special presentation for you guys. I don't remember ever giving a standing ovation to a department in the City of Fresno. You deserve a standing ovation, and we are going to give you that right now.
Next, we'll go to our scheduled, scheduled hearing, which is a resolution at 9:30 of the Council of the City of Fresno, naming conference room at Fresno Yosemite International Airport, the Nick Palomaros Room, by Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, everyone. We lost a lot of our audience, but good morning. This is a great honor for me today to be part of a resolution to honor a vital person in our community, someone that we all know about, and we now have an opportunity to express our appreciation for this individual. So, Kevin, if you and the family would like to join me, that'd be great. I want to start by thanking the amazing staff at the airport. You guys are always doing a great job. Good morning, sir. Good to see you. We have more family members here. I think they're being shy, but that's okay. And I want to thank the City's Attorney's Office for working with us on this item. A resolution is a little bit something different from a proclamation, but through our teamwork and partnership, we're able to bring this forward today. So, we're here today to name a conference room at Fresno Yosemite International Airport. That room will be called the Nick Palomaros Room. Unfortunately, our friend passed away in May of this year, and his loss is not felt just by the community or by the airport, but by the entire city of Fresno. So, we're going to show you a few pictures right here with Nick, and he, as you can see on the wall behind him, he's got every who's who in the world back there. That all came through our airport. So, Nick's family was gracious enough to share the photos that you see behind you. We're going to put those in the conference room, along with naming it prominently, the Nick Palomaros Conference Room at the City Airport. So, I wanted to say something else. Oh, you know what? So, in our proclamation, we have a lot of things to talk about there, and Nick has encased two locks of hair at his airport facility. Those locks of hair came from John Lennon and Yoko Ono. Unbelievable. And that's just a, just a little taste of what we have there. You can see all that when you come down to the airport, replicas thereof, and have that with us. So, I think we have a brief video to show. Are we showing it now? Here we go. Thank you, Andrew.
He cut my hair about every quarter, six weeks. I asked him once, "Why, why you still do this?" And he says, "I love people, and I love my job."
Nick was truly an airport ambassador to this great Fresno airport. We will remember his wonderful smile and his sense of humor. Of course, all of that really good advice that barbers give, Nick was right at the top of the list. If you wanted to know something about anything, just ask Nick. Nick the Barber.
Isn't that fantastic? Who's who of the entertainment world, the sports world, every aspect, Nick was a, truly a legend. And I think you have a couple of words for us?
Sure. Just on behalf of my family, I would really like to thank the airport, and, you know, to be honored in this way for my father is, well, we're just thankful and proud of our father. And he really did take it serious, the ambassador part. He loved this city. He loved the people. He loved this Fresno state. He loved all aspects of it, and he was proud to live here, and he was proud to be one of the first faces that people saw when they came out of the, off a plane, and represent the city. And he, he never spoke bad about this city, ever. He was, he was a booster for this city, and he enjoyed that. And so, I'm thankful for the airport and the honor that, I mean, they have gone above and beyond for me and my family after the loss. They've really just shown their hearts, and it's a real tribute to my father and the kind of man he was, and I'm just really thankful for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Round of applause, please. That's fantastic. Nick, that's our resolution, and Nick will live on forever, absolutely forever, as long as the airport's standing, that room will be there with all these fantastic mementos that you've shared with us. So, we can't thank you and your family enough, and who's with us over here now?
That would be my mother, my mother, Annie, and...
Raise your hand, Annie.
She's very shy. And my, there would be lots of family would be here, but they will all be there for the presentation of the room.
Very good. Thank you very much. And Kevin, thank you. And can we read that proclamation, please?
Whereas Nick Palomaros served in the U.S. Navy as a signalman before attending and completing barber college in Fresno. And whereas after relocating to the famous Knop Hill neighborhood in San Francisco, Palomaros began his barbering career that would capture a lifetime of memories, as well as clientele, that would remain close after many years. It was there in San Francisco where Palomaros cut the hair of superstars John Lennon and his wife, Yoko Ono. One of his most famous keepsakes is the hair belonging to those two superstars that Palomaro proudly framed and displayed later years. And whereas in 1972, Palomaros opened his barber shop in the Fresno Yosemite Airport that would house over four decades of memories. The memories include photos of many famous celebrities that Palomaros had seen passing through Fresno Yosemite International Airport. And whereas Palomaros' love of cutting hair, as well as his love for interacting with thousands of people who pass through the airport, made him an unofficial reader to those traveling, departing, and arriving at Fresno. Even in his later years of cutting hair, his health hardly kept him away from his barber shop in the airport. And whereas Palomaros' bright and positive spirit that accompanied him to his barber shop every day for 45 years, and gave the City of Fresno a gift of one that lasts airport's barber. Now therefore, be it resolved, we, the Fresno City Council members, do hereby rename the conference room at Fresno Yosemite International Airport, the Nick Palomaros Room.
Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate that very much.
So, this is a resolution, and there has to be action taken by the council? So, I'll wait for Councilmember Capriolio to come on up.
Proudly and happily make a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll go ahead and second. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Capriolio, and I made the second. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously, and so it will be officially named. Congratulations to the Palomaros family.
Thank you all. Thank you, colleagues. Appreciate that. Please come and enjoy that room.
Great. So, we'll move on with the next thing on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of September 27th, Madam Clerk?
No changes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Councilmember Olivia makes the motion, second by Councilmember Capriolio. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries 7-0. We'll go on to Councilmember Reports and Comments. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. In District 4, we had our first Coffee with a Cop, and it's a new program we're trying to institute throughout our cities, and my colleagues also have been trying to get involved with this. It's really fantastic to see the business people in our community, as well as the constituents, come together over a cup of coffee with our men and women in blue, and just discuss things about our city, about their community, our communities, and it's creating a relationship that will last a long time. So, I wanted to thank the Northeast Policing District, Fresno State Police Department, they were there as well for their hard work, as well as McDonald's for hosting the event on October 3rd. So, now, we're going to keep this going. Yesterday, at Starbucks, we had another Coffee with a Cop, and a great turnout. And as this grows in our community, this will enhance our community, enhance our community relationships with our law enforcement officers. In fact, the media was here, and Andrew, if you'd turn that, flip that switch, please. We've got something we want to show you, just for a couple of seconds.
A cup of coffee, that's all it takes to start a conversation.
What do we do when we have a cup of coffee? We talk about anything.
Our National Coffee with a Cop Day, law enforcement nationwide are reaching out to meet the people they serve in their neighborhoods. In this Northeast Fresno McDonald's, police hope they can clear up any misinformation and bridge the gap between them and the community.
There's no agenda, no topic, basically just a little good cup of coffee, carry on a conversation, and to address some of the things that they may have, and also to build that relationship.
This is the first time Roger Matova attends the event. He saw it as the perfect opportunity to have his concerns addressed.
Wanted to get some information on what to do about traffic on my street.
He had all his questions answered, and left with a newfound understanding of what it means to be an officer.
They're human beings, too, and they're just trying to do a job, and they have to make split-second decisions about what to do in certain cases, and I commend that.
The Northeast Policing District is doing much more than just this event to connect with the public. In the past, they've done cookies with cops to meet children. Bicycle units are also making police more approachable on the streets. Detective Danny Kim with the Fresno Police Department says it's also reducing crime.
Statistics shows that crimes on the Shaw Corridor have dropped dramatically, especially the Elrata Park area.
PD has Coffee with a Cop events throughout the year. Kim says they'll continue doing them to strengthen ties. In Northeast Fresno, Gilbert Magione, ABC 30 Action News.
Thank you all very much. By, the next event is scheduled for October 17th, between 8:00 and 10:00 a.m. at Chick Filet on Shaw and First. Please come out and share your experiences, and your gratitude, and your questions, and anything you have to do with our law enforcement people. We want to take that opportunity to get to know them and share our thoughts, and our, from my perspective, particularly their dedication and appreciation for what they've done for District 4, as well as our entire city. So, thank you very much, Council President.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Capriolio. Anyone else?
I have a couple comments and reports. So, one, I want to just say a big thanks to all our partners who made the first-ever District 1 Fall Festival at Inspiration Park a success last month. We had over 600 folks come out, probably closer to 800. And I want to thank the Fresno City Firefighters Local 753 for donating and cooking the food for our event. I want to thank the, our Parks Department for making the Park 1 accessible, and for their hard work and setting up and providing face painting, the movie in the park, and other activities at Inspiration Park. And I also want to just thank all our local nonprofits and organizations that showed up and provided invaluable information to our residents. Next, I also, very similar to Councilmember Capriolio mentioned, I now, for four years, have been doing Coffee and Conversations throughout District 1. And so, this past Tuesday, we had one of our District 1 Community Coffees at Starbucks on Shaw and Philent. I do want to thank Captain Burke Farah, who was out there. I think that the presence of our police officers out in these different community events are very, very critical. This was also a morning, a morning coffee, and so folks got to come out and share their concerns in the Northwest Area Policing District. I do just want to announce that our next community coffee meeting that I will be having in the Tower area will be Tuesday, October 30th, at 7:30 at Review, right on Olive. So, encourage folks to come out. Our Police Department will be there, and we'll have other special guests to talk about some of the city services that we have, and just to be able to listen about the concerns and provide updates of what we're doing here in the City of Fresno. Lastly, I want to just make a comment and a statement to my council colleagues regarding an item, Item 3C, which is anticipated sales of revenues. I won't be able to participate in the actual action, but you guys will be considering disposition sale of a city property. If approved, I would like to start a conversation regarding the anticipated revenue, understanding that there are not current obligations for the sales proceeds. I would like to make a recommendation that the revenues be allocated for public safety. There's been a big discussion and debates about, you know, the need for additional public safety resources, both for our police and fire. It's 1.9 million, and so if the sale of this property goes, and these revenues haven't been previously allocated, I'd encourage and support that my colleagues start a conversation about how we can appropriate these proceeds. Those are all my comments. We'll move on to contested consent calendar, and the first item was pulled by Councilmember Gary Bretafell, which was Item 1C.
Mike, I was just curious about the increase, if you could explain the increase in the cost on this?
Yes, sir. Jerry Schuber, Department of Public Utilities. The, the item before you actually is an increase in the cost due to some SCADA equipment that didn't actually, it wasn't supported by the, the devices that were already installed. So, we had to do an upgrade on that, as well as there was a time extension, because we were digging wells for that particular landfill, and some of the wells that we were digging were having problems. One in particular had sand and turbidity issues, so that we had to dig it deeper, and those were cost overruns we didn't expect.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Great. So, there is a motion, and there's a second. Is there anyone from the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, there is a motion by Councilmember Bretafell, second by Councilmember Olivia. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries 7-0. Next, we have item, I'll go to Item 1N. That's, that was the other item that was pulled by Councilmember Gary Bretafell.
Oh, you want me to do that?
Yeah.
So, I have a couple of questions. How much have we paid a seller for the program?
A little over $3 million for the program. So, that included the design of the structure of the program, all of the transfer of the data. So, all of the old information, 20-plus years' worth of data, had to be migrated into the new system. So, it had to be translated, identified, migrated, and then the stand-up of the new system. identified, migrated, and then the stand-up of the new system. So this particular contract is specifically with a consultant who is licensed and certified to work on Acela Systems to help us with reports, with record types, with specific fixes, workflow changes, that we have been identified by our customers and by staff.
Okay, and I noticed, so we need Burn, is what you're saying?
Yes.
You've been with the $3 million, we still got to have Burn?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. And you said, there's $150,000, you're going to extend the contract 50, not to exceed 50,000 more?
Right, so what we are requesting is for the city council to accept a contract for $150,000 with, and to authorize up to an additional 50,000 if we need that over the course of the year.
Okay, so the one concern I have is when we're already saying we're going to extend it 150, allow 50,000 more, does it ever not go to the extra 50 if we're already talking about an extension of another 50?
It can. This particular consultant has been really judicious in their use of the funds, so if there are things that she can show our staff how to do, she'll do that, which saves us quite a bit of money. So we anticipate that, you know, if we can gain a lot of training within the staff, we won't have the need for that additional 50. But it would allow us the flexibility if we had a large issue or a large problem, especially with our integration of existing systems. So our Heartland system with financial payments that people pay online, with other systems internally, we've had difficulty, and those are some links that have been challenging for us, that would be helpful if we had something break that we had the ability just to call them and to get it done.
Okay. And does Burn know that we're extending the 150 with the possibility of 50 if needed?
Yes.
That's a problem for me, so I won't be supportive.
So there is a motion, second by Councilmember Chavez. I have a question in terms of that additional 50,000. Is it issue if we don't approve the additional, or that flexibility? Can't you guys always just come to council?
No, we could come back. It's a time issue. If we're near the end of the contract, and then we have a large problem within the software...
But won't you guys have an understanding that you will need an additional 50,000? I know we're only talking about 50,000, but 50,000 is 50,000.
Right.
So wouldn't you guys have some kind of sense, as you guys are approaching the 150, that you're going to need more?
Absolutely. So we can certainly come back if there's the need to come back for an additional 50.
No, they would have to come back, because the appropriation is 150. And so anytime that there's anything above 50 already, it would be adding on. So they would have to come back to the council to approve if we didn't. I would feel much more comfortable doing the 150 and then coming back to the council. I feel like that we could be much more judicious. So if my council colleagues want to amend that, I would ask that it be amended in that fashion, and if not, I'll be a no vote today. Would you agree to that, or?
Let me make sure I understand what you want to do. You want to have them come back to ask for an additional 50,000?
If they're going to need the additional, yeah, I would like them to come back.
So they don't need to come back to ask for an additional 50,000?
They would.
Yes.
So, City Attorney, can you clarify that? Anytime we have an appropriation of, right, because we've already appropriated for this contract, because it's above 50, it would have to come back to us. Is that correct?
Unless the council delegates authority and approval of this contract for an additional 50, anytime the total expenditure is over 50,000, it has to come to council, yes.
Okay, that's fine. I'll accept that.
Councilmember Olivia.
So what's the motion now, is to make them come back?
Yeah, if they need to come back for an additional 50,000, they have to come back to council.
You know, just look at with, you know, I don't mean to, not trying to attack the maker of the motion and the second, but I think that the administration is trying to do this to be efficient. I mean, we and they deal with tens of millions of dollars on a daily basis, and I think that just in the name of efficiency, we let the professional city staff, I mean, I think the Director of the Planning Department's doing a good job, and I'm not saying that nobody here, that there's anybody who thinks that she's not. But just in terms of efficiency, I think we just, I would support the item, just do $150,000 now and move on, instead of come back for more agenda items. And so that would be my wish, but if, you know, I, obviously, I see how this is going, but I don't think it's necessary.
I agree with you. I don't necessarily think that this body wants to come and contemplate a $50,000 contract. However, if it will assuage some of the issues for my colleagues, I'm willing to do it, because it's not a huge deal. So that's why I'm willing to accept it, so we can get the item disposed of.
Councilmember Bretafell.
Yeah, I appreciate Council President Soria, your position. I will support that, that it come back. And today it's 50, but it's a minimum of 50 that it comes back that we look at. So it could be 50, could be $500,000 that we have to look at. And I'm not as confident as some of my council members about how this money gets spent. And I'm not specifically speaking to planning today, I'm talking in general with consultants and amendments, and they constantly come back with new amendments, and they want more money. And I think it's a problem. I think it's an ongoing problem, and I think it's one that we've talked about since I've been on the council. And so I think it's an ongoing issue. I don't think it isn't a problem. But I will support Council President Soria's change, and that's it.
Great, so Councilmember Baines did accept the amendment. I don't know if the second, if you're okay. Sure, so that would be the motion. Any other comments or opposition? Seeing none, motion carries six zero. Thank you. Next is item 1M, and I actually have to step out, so...
Yes, because...
I know, but Councilmember Brandow just stepped out of the room. Can you take this?
Councilmember Baines? Yeah, because Council President Soria works for the College District. She has a very technical conflict here, but nonetheless...
Who pulled the item?
I did.
She did. Greg, I don't, I'll let you make a presentation then.
This is just an amendment to an existing contract with the State Center Community College District.
Motion to approve.
Any opposition? I forgot, we've got to go to the public. I mean, anybody from the public that can have a comment on this item. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Well, it carries actually five zero with members Soria and Soria recusal, and Member Brandow absent. Well, just to keep things going, I think we have a 10 o'clock item by appearance Gonzalo Arambula. He doesn't seem to be here, so we'll move on to General Admin 3A.
Yeah, I know, I know, I should have... But, next time. Next, we'll go to, I think we have a scheduled communication at 10 a.m. I don't know if Gonzalo's here.
Oh, you did?
Okay, perfect. So then we'll go on to General Administration, item 3A. This is the approval of Amendment Number Two to the Parking Lot Management Agreement with SP+ Corporation at Fresno Yosemite International Airport. Hey, Kevin.
Hey there, Council President. Council, good morning. Kevin Michael, Director of Aviation. SP+ is our current parking lot operator, and they've been doing a very good job. And I will say this, due to the growth that we've been seeing at the airport, and the fact that we've been having to, you know, adjust, especially during peak holiday times, in terms of parking and coming up with creative ideas on how to accommodate our passengers, they've worked very, very well with us, and it's been a fairly smooth transition. So this is just an extension of the existing contract. And they do this, they support airports all over the country. We're very happy with their performance here in Fresno. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions. And I also have a representative from SP Parking here today, in case there are any questions from them. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kevin. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone here in the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Olivia. Any opposition? Seeing none, motion carries six zero. Next, we have item 3B. This is a bill for introduction, adding Article 33 to Chapter Nine of the Fresno Municipal Code relating to shared mobility devices. Jim, good morning.
Good morning, Council President. Councilmembers Jim Shad, City Manager's Office. This item is to bring to you for your consideration an ordinance related to shared mobility devices. We would be adding Article 33 to Chapter Nine of the Fresno Municipal Code. The ordinance really provides some regulation and franchising opportunities for shared mobility devices, including electric scooters and bicycles. The regulation will allow for deployment and use of those devices while addressing parking concerns and issues or potential issues with adherence to traffic laws. The item is here for your consideration. Once it was considered and approved, it will allow staff to develop and enter into some pilot franchise agreements with some of the providers of those devices within the city of Fresno. We have staff here, as well as some of those providers here, to answer any of the questions that council may have.
Thank you, Jim. We'll go out to the public, and I do have one card right now. So Katie Stevens?
Can Council President, just, I would like to call Katie up during my time. But, I mean, if you want to speak now, you can, but during my time, I'd like to bring her up, in case she needs extra time. We've had a dialogue on this issue, and I want to give her ample time to speak and also maybe answer questions. But it's okay, if you want to use your three minutes, don't let me stop you.
I'll take your time, thanks.
Okay, so is there anyone else in the public who wish to comment on this item? Great, so being that there's none, I'll go ahead and go to my colleagues, Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you. On this particular item, I've been in communication with President Castro from the university on this specific item. And he and I'd like to have an opportunity to discuss this. We have a meeting set for next week, so I would ask that we set this over two weeks before we vote on this issue, and give the university and myself, and anyone else who wishes to join us, the franchise people, or the, it is a policy we're engaging here. So as policymakers, we need some time to discuss this and refine it to the point where we have a transportation policy on the university level, as well as the city level. So I would ask that we continue the vote until two weeks from today, it'll be the 25th. Thank you. I'm not saying we should not discuss it. They can treat this as a workshop, if you will, but I'd like to hold off on the vote till I have an opportunity to be with President Castro.
Perfect. Councilmember Olivia.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I had a...
Sorry, excuse me, Councilmember. Did you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to settle over two weeks.
So there is a motion and a second. Councilmember Olivia.
Well, my colleague at the other end of the desk here, we spoke briefly about it yesterday, and, you know, I don't really have a problem with more time, but when you're in business, of course, time is money, and time kills deals. I think that this city has an opportunity to be very progressive and very forward-thinking, and welcome and foster an innovative new industry. I think that, you know, I can appreciate that the president of Fresno State wishes to be a part of it, but, you know, as we say every so often, you know, we can have committees, and we can have meetings forever. I would like to see this go through today. I mean, we'll just see how the vote goes, to hold it over. And like I said, I usually don't have a problem with council members' request more time. But I think with that, I'd like to call Katie up. Katie Stevens used to be a part of the team that helped the city get out of, avoid bankruptcy. She did a great job for us for a number of years. Come on up. And now she's with Lime. She works, explain everything. And then she's also available for questions as well.
Sure. So thank you, Council President and councilmembers. Really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Councilmember Olivier, for inviting me up to speak. So my name is Katie Stevens. I'm Senior Director for Strategic Development for Lime. I used to be at the city of Fresno, left to go to eBay, and now I'm at this great company, Lime, which is a tremendously fast-growing startup in the world of shared mobility. We're in over 100 markets right now, over 100 cities, expanding globally very, very quickly. We believe that we work with local governments. As a local government person originally, we believe we work with local governments before we enter a market, which is why we're here today and had conversations with a number of you before you've seen Lime scooters on the ground. That said, we're really excited to be here. We hire locally. We have a juicer program, which I can talk more about if you'd wish, but sort of providing opportunities for local residents to make a little money on the side, juicing our scooters about the cost of a quarter per scooter at night, and then redeploying them in the city. We have a deep connection to public transit. So when we look at things like public assets, like Bus Rapid Transit, and the city of Fresno working to make Bus Rapid Transit more popular, we provide a direct first mile, last mile to those public transit options. So we have about a third, we did a one-year report, about a third of all trips, Lime trips, are connecting to public transit, right? So we're serving a useful purpose in that sort of, you know, first mile, last mile again, sort of ability to keep, you know, low-income and, you know, individuals moving to public transit in a very meaningful way. We have a Lime Access Program. So we have a very robust low-income program, provides about 50% off for our scooters. Our scooters are a dollar per ride and 15 cents per minute. So they're very cheap as it is. We say typically, a standard scooter ride is under three miles, and at 50% off, that's a very subsidized, very affordable way to get around. I wanted to talk a little bit about data. So one of the values that Lime can provide is data sharing with cities, and we're more than happy and eager to do it. This sort of data is talking about, you know, where we, where rides initiate, where rides end up, how long are the rides. This is providing very useful data to a city when they look at transportation planning, as they look at transportation grants, maybe their active transportation grants. So this is all data we share freely with the city, provide data dashboards and other things. Again, I could go on about our integration, but would be very excited for that to be a part of the franchise agreement, as well as safety and parking. So we have robust education on safety and smart parking. We do it in-app. We do physical education, if the city would allow us. So we look at like stenciling and other things, you know, physical signage. We have the in-app tutorials. We have notifications on the stem of our scooters, which tell people, you know, you have, you need to wear helmets. The in-app tutorial talks about, you know, you need to stay off of sidewalks, you need to be wearing helmets. We do helmet giveaways and some other things. So there's, we have 24/7 customer service, and certainly collaborate with cities and, you know, and universities in how they want to help educate students and users on smart parking and smart riding, which is a massive priority for us. And with that, maybe I'll just stop. I'm sure folks have questions, and I'm happy to answer them, more targeted. But thank you. Yeah, we're really excited to be in Fresno. Couldn't be more thrilled. So we'd love to, you to vote yes on this. Yeah, thank you.
Katie, do you, I just, I had a couple of questions for you. How do you, like, are you in any college towns? Are you in Long Beach? Are you in Chico? Are you in other college towns like Fresno?
We are. So we just signed an agreement with CSU Monterey. It's probably our more recent. We're looking at a CSU system that was a more recent contract with them. We operate in and around many universities. So we are in Arizona, near ASU. I'm just trying to think of my Western markets here.
So do you need the...
UW, yeah, UW in Seattle, yeah.
So we need this, if the city moves forward today, would you have to sign a separate contract with Fresno State, or?
We certainly defer to Fresno State on how they want to approach it. I think there's certainly time, you know, hopefully after... certainly time, you know, hopefully after passage of the ordinance today, that we can work on what an agreement looks like, whether it's with the city in coordination with Fresno State, sort of one agreement, or whether it's an independent agreement with Fresno State. I think there are a couple of things. So one, you know, we could have the ability with an agreement with the city to launch in and around, but not on university property. Or, you know, we could include an agreement with university, again, having a robust conversation with them about what they'd like, how they like to approach it, but would allow us to launch on the university and do some things, focus on what are targeted spots on a university campus that makes sense for scooters and how we'd want to operate.
Could we move forward today and just carve out Fresno State until that conversation's been had? Could, so could we get a, could, maybe even the maker of the motion, could we move forward today? Because if Transportation Department supports it, and I think it's a good idea, could we carve out Fresno State today and then just move forward after that?
You know, I'd like to point out that we have been working closely with Fresno State, and they're actually waiting on us to get this ordinance in place. And Larry Salinas is here right now from Fresno State, and he's willing to speak and able to speak to the item if we need him to.
I would be interested to hear from Mr. Salinas, because, I mean, if we can get, if we can get him going, I would like to get him going, and we can carve them out and just come back until after your conference.
I think based upon her comments, she's indicated that she'd like to communicate with the university, not just Fresno State. We have Fresno Pacific, we have Fresno City, and we have the outline campus in northern Fresno, too. All these need to be discussed because that'll be the focal point of this usage. It's not really the city of Fresno. It's really the students. I don't see any of us riding an electric scooter.
Oh, I'm going to. I'm about to.
I should say.
I hope you wear a helmet, my friend.
It's too late. What about meeting with Fresno Unified and Central Unified? And, I mean, like, where does it stop? Do we consult? I mean, why don't we meet with Jim Ovino? And, I mean, where do we draw the line in terms of meeting with schools? Like, why not sign contracts with People's Church? Because they have a big campus, too. Like, I guess I'm trying to.
I could answer that for you in two weeks.
So we're going to engage just one, two learning institutions? Like, we're going to engage school boards? I think as the city, we should just make this policy, if it's important to Fresno State to be carved out, let's carve them out and let the other thing work. But if somebody wants to, you know, scoot around Tower and go downtown and stuff, I don't, I don't see why we wait. I don't, I don't see why we have to. I perfectly see your point of view and want to help you, want to vote today to enable you to make whatever happened at Fresno State to happen. So I'm not coming from a place where I'm being cynical. I don't support your motion. Sure, I do, but I'm wondering if there's a way that we could carve out Fresno State until that time. But, I mean, let's hear from Mr. Salinas really quick and find out if, can you come, it's still, it's still my time. It's still my time. So if you want to come up, I'll call you up and find out the university's position on it.
Thank you, Councilmen. Members of the council, Larry Salinas, Executive Director of Governmental Relations in the office of the President at Fresno State. And I do want to, first, on behalf of the President and the university, thank you for the city staff's work on this since we've been involved with it in the last couple of months. At that time, we deferred to the city to act on creating a framework and ordinance, and we appreciate that. I would say that, given the conversations that President Castro's had with Councilman Capriolio and seeing the ordinance come out about the same time that you guys did the framework and reviewing that, the president is simply asking for a couple of weeks for us to be able to consult with city manager, with staff, Mr. Shad, and our council representative, just to see how that ordinance can apply to the university in this case. We're not opposed to a carve-out, but we're asking simply for just a couple of weeks to be able to have a full discussion.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then there's another gentleman here who wanted to come forward. Are you from Bird? Okay, come on up.
Thank you, Councilmember, for allowing me to speak. President Soria, members of the city council, thank you for having me. Marty Fatu, Government Partnerships with Bird. We are an e-scooter share company, active in eighty-five different U.S. cities. We are also international. We are looking at markets all over the world, but we're, we want to be in Fresno. We want to partner with the city council. We want to partner with Fresno State. Councilmember Capriolio, I do want to apologize for, you know, any of the issues that have gone on in the past at Fresno State. I know that the university and that surrounding area is in your district, and I do want to give my heartfelt apology. And I really look forward, we all really look forward to working with you in the future. So just a little bit on Bird, you know, one of the big things that we really see for Fresno is our community aspect. Our One Bird program is our equity program, where if you receive any federal, state, or local government assistance, you, no questions asked, or you're an active-duty member of the U.S. Armed Forces or a veteran with an honorable discharge, you send a receipt of whatever assistance you receive to one@bird.co, and we waive that one-dollar start fee for you. Another great thing that would be great bringing jobs, you know, to Fresno is our charger program, where anyone can sign up to become a charger. You pick up the scooters at the end of the day. You have to put them out, you know, in the early morning, and you can make anywhere between ten and twenty dollars per scooter. Another great thing that we have really come up with with our government tech program is our Save Our Sidewalks pledge, where we will donate one dollar per scooter per day to the city of Fresno or to, you know, a bicycle group, which the city of Fresno recommends, to enlarging people-protected bike lanes. So again, that's one dollar per scooter per day. I did want to talk a little bit about, you know, also our carbon footprint. In the city of Oakland, where we've been only operating for close to three months now, we have saved over seventy thousand pounds of carbon emissions, which is huge, and we'd love to bring that to Fresno. And then, you know, one of the big things is government and cities are our number-one customer. So whatever concerns that you have about, you know, our company, our fleet, our fleet size, you know, we'd love to answer. Our GovTech platform, we have developed a dashboard for cities where, you know, you can see our data as soon as possible. I highly recommend if you were to want to reach out to some of your colleagues in the city of Portland, Oregon, city of Oakland, California, city of San Jose, they will tell you that, you know, our government tech program has been quite resourceful to them. And I do want to make this quick. I know that we're going a little over time. Sorry. We are big with helmet giveaways. We've given over fifty thousand helmets in all of our markets, and any community event you want us at, we will have helmets there. We will show people how to properly operate our scooters to really get that first and last-mile solution to transportation. So I really appreciate you allowing me to speak, and thank you.
Thank you for coming up. Now, are you in the process with the Transportation Department? Are you?
We are, I believe. My colleague, yeah, so my colleague Marlo Sandler is the Senior Manager for Government Partnerships. She's actually out of town right now, so I came in this morning and yesterday to meet with the Chamber of Commerce and some of the local groups. So we really want to partner with the city.
Good, thank you. No, council colleagues, I think that we're on a city council as, life is changing very rapidly in our city and around the world, and I think that these two companies that are here right now represent a really cool and neat way to get around town. I think that their business model, both companies, is very interesting. I'd like to see them make it just in the world. I think that it's a really innovative new thing, and I think it's really cool to be part of an elected body that gets to preside over the rolling out of this new industry. And right now, it may be Lime and Bird, but maybe down the road, there'll be more companies, and we'll see something really cool happen. So, you know, I think that if, but voting to help Lime doesn't prohibit Bird, right, today?
It's not Lime.
Bird is in the pipeline, and I know they came and they're gonna, they withdrawn, they're gonna come back, right? But they're, without sanction or prejudice, right, that they can come back and participate?
This ordinance is not specific to any company. Bird and Lime have approached us, and we intend to work with both of them.
Okay, all right, that sounds fantastic. So I think that, to me, it sounds really good. Member Capriolio, would you be willing to amend your motion to carve out Fresno State and allow these companies to begin today?
I would reluctantly, no, I would not do that because it affects the entire city and all parties involved. We're policymakers, and our subcommittee on transportation was not even consulted on this issue, and we're the policymakers. So we need time to develop a policy that protects.
Isn't that what this is?
I haven't seen it in a transportation committee forum, which is prelude to transportation issues, is my understanding. That's why we're on the transportation subcommittee. So I'm just saying that the policymakers have been bypassed thus far. I'd like to get involved with the policy, particularly with District Four and Fresno State University.
And I thank you. And so today, I'll be casting a friendly no to your motion, and if it doesn't pass, then I'm, I would like to make a motion to carve out the areas that, to get your support, to carve out the areas that you think should wait. And I think that I would be willing to move forward today and out of respect for your district and obviously the biggest entity in your district, to carve them out and provide more time. So I want to hear what everybody else has to say. Maybe I'll change my mind depending on what we hear, but right now, I'll probably be a friendly no, because I like to get these folks going as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Brendel.
Jim, I need to, I need to know a little bit more about the whole scene. I went to Long Beach a couple of weeks ago, and I saw some stenciled areas on the sidewalk. There were a lot of people using scooters down on the waterfront in Long Beach. But I need some clarity. Are these scooters going to be allowed on city sidewalks, or do they travel in the auto lane?
They would travel in the auto lane or the bike lane. The ordinance does not allow them on the sidewalk for use, but they would typically be parked on the sidewalk.
Okay, so they can be parked on the sidewalk, and I think that's what that stenciling was about, because?
Yes.
Yeah.
So honestly, that is one of the biggest concerns, is where they're parked and whether they block access, particularly for the disabled. And so we've been working with both Lime and Bird discussing that, and there are a bunch of methodologies we use. We intended in the franchise agreements to allow for specific locations to either be designated for those scooters or designated to preclude the scooters from being parked there.
Okay, and then is there any liability on the city of Fresno's part for any operation of these scooters, or say they're not left in a proper zone, they're left somewhere else on the sidewalk, and somebody trips over a scooter, is the city of Fresno liable?
Well, I think that's a question. We could always face some type of suit for it, but in the franchise agreements, what we would also be asking for is a waiver of liability indemnity from the scooter companies. And I can't speak for them directly, but I am sure that they have indemnity clauses and waivers of liability in their contracts with every scooter rider.
Okay. All right, so with clarity, then, they're really not allowed on city sidewalks, so they won't be interacting with pedestrians?
They're not allowed to be ridden on city sidewalks.
Okay, and I assume that might be different over at Fresno State, which is...
That is the conversation we intended to have with Fresno State, and my intention was that in those franchise agreements, one of the things that would be contained in there is that, an obligation with the franchisees, that they have those discussions with not just Fresno State, but the various colleges and universities, to make sure they're abiding by policy that Fresno State or the other universities would set up.
Okay, okay, thank you. I asked the city manager if a two-week delay to have a conversation with Fresno State is, you know, a problem with her, and she said, not really. So I, Councilman Olivier, I would, I have no real problem with waiting two weeks to allow that conversation. My guess is that students are going to be most of the traffic on these scooters, with the exception of yourself. And Councilwoman Soria, which I never saw her ride one in Long Beach, but that's a different story. But, okay, you've answered my questions. Thanks a lot, Jim.
Councilmember Baines.
Thank you, Council President. Well, my issues are probably somewhat different than what you've heard. First of all, the people from Bird, where are they at? Yeah, listen, the emails, way too much. I would just definitely recommend that when you enter into a city, you don't do it that way by bombarding the city council with a bunch of emails. I literally have to have a council assistant come and show me how to clear all the emails out, which is a waste of my office's time. So that alone almost made me want to not even support this issue. However, I decided to give it some further thought, and Katie, it's really good to see you. You actually lent a lot of credibility to this argument today, so thank you. My problem with this ordinance is the fact that we're doing an ordinance at all. I'm not even sure why this needs to be regulated to the degree we're regulating it. I don't know why we just, I mean, other than, I do understand the parking issue and that these scooters should be parked safely and appropriately. And obviously, Jim, you talked about them not being able to be used on a sidewalk, but some of the provisions we're doing, to me, are overblown for a simple shared mobility program with scooters for a dollar a ride. And sometimes they're even cheaper than that, right? So we literally have the provision in here where we can arrest someone if they violate part of this code, or a thousand-dollar fine for a one-dollar scooter ride. I don't even know why we're doing that. I would, there's no way I can support this ordinance in its current form. I think it should be scaled down significantly. I think we should just let these folks go to work. I totally agree with Councilmember Capriolio about coordinating with Fresno State better. That is an appropriate, in my opinion, request, because I would suspect that students, you know, are going to be some of the largest, you know, users of the service. But, you know, my recommendation to staff is, and I know, I do know that we took language from other cities that are doing it this way, and for whatever reason, I don't agree with so much regulation on this. I think we should scale it down significantly.
Councilmember Baines.
Allow these folks to go to work. They have to have a business license. They get a business license, and they park where they're supposed to park. He's the lane they're supposed to lane, and we need to let them do it. So that's where I'm at. I want to be supportive of the continuance for the discussion with Fresno State, because I think that that's not unreasonable at all. But, and I hope when it comes back, it's, it looks different.
Hey, Councilmember Baines, I just, I want to applaud you and thank you for the, by far the most libertarian speech that you have given from the council dais in the eight years that we have worked together. And you know what you did?
I finally made you proud?
Well, no, you make me proud every week.
Oh.
But, you know something? You have changed my mind. I think that we can take, see? We can change our minds when people make good points and good arguments. I agree with you, and I think that two weeks is good. Is that enough to take out these bizarre criminal penalties? I mean, we don't even have enough cops to crack down on methamphetamine or bus fare evaders. So how are we going to go crack down on the, I can't vote for unless that stuff comes out, that criminalization. So for two weeks, I mean, what are you going to have scooter police? So for two weeks, let's do what he wants, and then do what he wants, and then I'll vote for it. So is that okay with Lime and Bird? Let's take two weeks. And, I mean, we, we can't have criminal penalties for that. I mean, that's a bridge too far. So let's come up with some kind of thing that everybody up here can agree with. And thank you for all your comments, Oliver.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you. Libertarian tendencies. Wait till your last term. I got a couple of questions for the Bird representative, maybe Katie or the gentleman that came up and spoke. And so I actually had a chance to take a ride in one of these ones that were by Fresno Pacific, and they're actually pretty cool to just take around. But I agree with Councilmember Capriolio. I think it needs to be done right. It needs to be safe, and we have to have provisions in there. So when you came up and spoke, you said that you're in a couple of cities. You said you mentioned San Jose and Oakland?
Correct. So in the state of California, we are in the city of San Jose, city of Oakland, Santa Monica, Los Angeles, Long Beach, San Diego, a lot of the other suburban areas in and around the city of Los Angeles as well.
How many scooters do you have in the city of San Jose?
In the city of San Jose, right now, we are over a thousand. Their, so their legislation has been continued now. The ordinance has been continued, actually, to tomorrow. So they're meeting tomorrow to go over that again.
Okay, so there's a thousand total in operation in San Jose?
Correct.
How long have you been in San Jose?
We've been in San Jose since March.
March. March. Okay. And walk me through what the process is. And, you know, I was kind of looking up some stuff online. There's this Instagram page, it's called Scooter's Graveyard, that people that are frustrated with, you know, this thing's being left on the sidewalk, and just, you know, destroying the property. So walk me through what the process is in San Jose for when one of your scooters goes missing, or is reported stolen. What's your internal process for that?
Sure. So, you know, I'm actually really happy that you brought this up, because one of the new GovTech innovations that we have made, there's two. We have a program called Bird Watchers, where we actually hire local people to kind of be in the areas, especially the downtown areas, the major corridors, where they actually go out and educate folks on how to ride, to make sure they're riding correctly, that they're docking the scooters correctly, they're not docking in a doorway, or in the middle of the street. And then we also have something called Community Mode, where any member of the public now can report any sort of, you know, bad behavior on behalf of a user. And that goes right to our customer service center. So, you know, it's not like, oh, you know, I have to call the City of Fresno, and then the City of Fresno has to call Bird. It actually goes directly to us. And now, when you finish a Bird ride, before you can square up for your payment, you actually have to take a picture of where you've docked your scooter, before you can square up and pay, which is something that I think has really raised accountability in terms of our users.
I think that's great. So, but again, my question is, so when one of them goes stolen, so how do you know one of them got stolen or is missing?
We do, I mean, they're all GPS tracked, so when you go on the app, they're on a map. So what we usually do is, they're usually taken out of service, and then we will send a charger, who is an independent contractor, of course, and they can go ahead and try to find that scooter. I'll be honest, we have had some issues where folks have purposely vandalized these scooters and thrown them into Lake Merritt in Oakland. We've actually, you know, hired a company to go into the lake and take those out. So we take full responsibility of our scooters.
So do you have your own scooter repo team, so to speak? Or recovery team? I don't know what to call it.
Essentially, so that's made up of chargers and mechanics that we'll send out to do that. I personally have actually gone to a few of the cities in my markets. I'm up in Northern California, and I've done it myself. So, that's something, I think, in terms of our Community Mode program that we're launching now, that'll really, you know, raise the stakes in terms of, you know, our user accountability, making sure that, you know, the graveyards do not exist with that vandalism. And on our new model of scooters, it's actually very difficult for someone to rip off that barcode and really vandalize it. So, has a much wider berth, and the brain is a lot better, so.
Here's why I'm asking, and this, I wanted to get the background information. So, we know that our police officers are super swamped right now. They get calls. And the last thing I want to do is let them with the calls of finding scooters. So, has that been a problem in San Jose, where law enforcement has had to get involved in recovering these scooters?
Yeah. I've had conversations with San Jose Police Department, specifically their Motorcycle Division, which handles all traffic-related issues in vehicles, and they have not mentioned that. People do kind of, you know, like, they tend to bring up the Instagram page, kind of just, you know, kind of like, oh, you know, people are really not respecting your property, but not so much complaining that they have to go and actually handle the matters we usually do internally.
Good. So, when this comes back in two weeks, I'd like to get statistics in from San Jose, from Oakland, on what the incident is, the percentage, and how they've handled that with their own police department. That would be helpful to me.
Sure. Would you like me to send this directly to your office?
I think the whole council should get that information.
Sure.
Thank you.
Go ahead and get that for you. Thank you.
Except Councilmember Baines, who doesn't want any more emails from you. I don't need any more Bird emails.
And I do apologize for that, Councilmember. I'll speak to our advocacy team about that, and it won't happen again.
Yeah. It'd be better to just come visit us.
For sure.
Just schedule a meeting, just come talk to us. You don't need to send us much emails.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Looks like the screen is clear. I believe that we do still have the motion on the table to come back in two weeks, and there is a second. I won't add too much. I will say that I'm very supportive of enacting an ordinance that will allow the shared mobility devices here in the City of Fresno. I think that it's an exciting time. But I also believe that we have to do it the right way. And a number of the concerns that were raised by my council colleague, Oliver Baines, about the fines and the impoundment and all that, I want that to get addressed before. I also vote on this. So, if we can address that, and then, I'd like to also be able to be in part of some of the conversations with Fresno City College, to make sure that we are all going in the right direction as we bring this back in the next two weeks. So, there is a motion and a second. Any opposition to come back in two weeks? Seeing none, we'll be back with this item in two weeks. But I do believe that it was a really robust conversation on the number of issues with the shared mobility devices. Thank you. So hopefully, we'll see you guys, Lime and Bird, in two weeks. And we'll probably try to time this as well. So it'll, we'll set it on the agenda as a timed item. Next, we, I'm going to go a little bit out of order with our agenda. I do have some unscheduled communication items, and so, I'm going to go ahead and call some folks that have been waiting here patiently. First, I'll call Mary Murray. Mary, if you can state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes.
My name is Mary Murray. I live at 2317 East Yale. That's in Fresno. And my zip code is 93703. I live in the VA area. Right now, we have an issue with the parking signs that have just went up. We had some people come around with a petition to put it on ballot for us to vote on this, for parking certificates or stickers, because of the parking. I don't know if anybody knows, that a lot of the parking was cut out at the VA when they upgraded their facility. And so, the area that's really been congested is over across Clinton, on the Brown-Princeton side, where Bernie Elementary is at. There's a lot of parking over there. We haven't had any issues with our side. Well, when they came around for us to sign the petition, we were told that we were just going to sign the petition so that it could get on the ballot, so that we could vote. Then there was going to be, like, someone come out and help set up a neighborhood watch, which we already have a neighborhood watch in the area, had one for years. And if the issue was put on the ballot and it passed, then we, as a household, would get two parking stickers for each home. Well, we haven't had any parking issues. And then, when I talked to the lady that came around with the petition, she was saying that we didn't have enough people in our area to get it on the ballot for our side, for our residential area. So, what Mr. Olivier did was combine the signatures from our side with their side, and then they just put up the parking signs, and we know nothing about it. And then, we're told we get one parking permit per household, and then we had to pay for all the other ones every year. Well, I'm saying, it was just, it was a lie. I was just going to say it, just like it is. It was a lie, because we were told one thing, and then you absolutely turned around and did something else. And so, if we would have been told that they were going to be voted here at city council, then we would have been able to come and represent ourselves before it got to this point. And we weren't. I didn't receive anything in the mail. And I can't say, oh, that's my time up? All right.
Thank you. If my council colleague wishes to extend...
If you're not finished speaking, you can continue on my, I'll give you more time.
Well, I mean, basically, that's what it was. I'm just saying, you know, we should have had a say-so in it. When you come around with a petition, and you say that it's for us to sign, to go on the ballot, so that we can vote on it, that means us, as the public, as residents, it's going to be put on the ballot, so that we can vote on it. If it was going to be that you were going to be able to vote for us, then we should have been told that. Being that we were not told that, I've lived there for 30 years, so now, my children have to pay, or we are a family-oriented neighborhood, where there's always family functions going on, and it's always people parking, and we even have a daycare at the end of the street, where that cuts out the parking for the parents that come there to pick up and drop off their children. It's really, well, it's an inconvenience. We haven't had any problems with the parking on our side.
Okay.
So I, you know, I think, you know, as residents of Fresno, we try, I try, to support what I think is going to be something good, that's going to, what I see is going to help another neighborhood. I see the overflow. I've seen the overflow of parking when the parking areas were taken from the VA. But that doesn't mean that we, as residents in that area, should have to pay to park in front of our own homes.
Mrs. Murray, I thank you for taking the time out to come here today. And I have, I have two people in the back that can, that are, have been dispatched down here. I have the Director of Parking, and I have my Chief of Staff.
Sure.
And if you would like, they're available to you to meet with and talk through it, and maybe find some kind of answer. I think that, to explain to you, and also to my council colleagues, that petition was circulated by a member of the community. No one from the City of Fresno or my office circulated a petition or made any promises to anyone in the neighborhoods. If the, I think they're, you know, if that person misrepresented to you, then I don't have any knowledge of that.
Well, I called your office, and I spoke to them, and they, excuse me?
Sorry, we've been calling.
I called your office and spoke to them, and they said that that petition was giving you, you, permission to vote for us. And I don't think that that's right. When you were, when it came around...
Do you have a copy of this petition?
No, I do not. I didn't get anything.
I think Parking Department has it.
Excuse me?
We have another...
I'm not here to throw blame at anybody. It's just that it wasn't handled properly.
Thank you.
If we're told one thing, that's what it should be. And I'm sorry that you're getting the blunt end of it, but your name was given to me, and I called your office, and your office told me that that petition was to give you the right to vote for us here in city council.
We had a vote. The council voted on it, so.
Is there any way that we can...
Okay, you know what? I will schedule an agenda item for next week, and the council can have an update from the Parking Department.
That'd be great. I'd like to get a little bit more into this myself.
We do have someone else, I think, on that same issue.
Sure. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Mary, for coming. We do have Hector Serra. If you can state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes.
My name is Hector Serra. Thank you. Good morning to everyone here on the council. I live at the 2300 block of East Yale, in the VA Parking District 10. My neighbor, Mary, who's known me for over 30 years, and I have some other neighbors who are here, we are actually asking that the city remove the signs from our streets, which was added only after the District 10 was a conversation. To clarify, I've been in communication with District 7 office. We've been calling since March. Helen came around our neighborhood, asking for us to sign a petition that was to create a neighborhood watch. It was not about what is on this issue. It wasn't about VA District 10. She was giving mixed messages to my neighbors, and two people signed it, but I knew they signed it by mistake. And Mary is one of them, because I know she would not support something like this. We want the signs removed. We were told by Helen that signing the petition would create an improved neighborhood watch, and it would also create some kind of parking district, where we wouldn't have to pay anything, as long as we lived there in the homes and we were residents, we would get our own pass. But now that it's been passed by the council, you all voted in it back in June, I believe, we have to pay. I was told by the office, by Clint and Thomas Gaffrey in Parking, that we would be notified when a vote was going to come up, so we could have time to come give public comment. We were never given that. I was also notified by Thomas Gaffrey that we could do our own petition, so we started a petition. Everyone on my street has signed it. Everyone on the street north of me, on Vassar, has signed it, except for two people, because they're never home. Over 80% of the people in my neighborhood have signed this petition. We want the signs removed. We were never included in the conversation. We were never told what the real thing was about. And so, I believe that Helen and the community around north part of Veterans Hospital, they were given the right to do a petition and vote on it. We have to have that same right. We have that right. You have to give us that same due process. So we're asking that those signs be removed. We know the argument. We don't have a problem if people come park in our neighborhood. We're a different demographics. We have family gatherings all the time. We allow each other to park in front of each other's home all the time. The signs are very suspect. The signs say, no parking, even on holidays and weekends. So it's very suspect of what is the real goal behind the city to post these signs in our neighborhood? We have some families who couldn't make it today. They don't even have a driveway that they can park, because they, that's not the way the home was built. So we're asking the city council to please respond and remove the signs. We want, we submitted our petition. Over 80% of people don't want it. We're okay if people park in our neighborhood. We have a nursery there. We have businesses there. People park in front of my house all the time. It doesn't bother me. I'm okay with it. We will move towards legal action if we don't get a response, because we haven't had a response. Monday is when the enforcement's supposed to happen. We're not okay with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Hector.
Sir, Hector, point of order. Can I ask Hector a question real quick?
Yeah.
Hector?
After I ask a question, because I know he mentioned that there was other neighbors here. So I just wanted to make sure. Are there other folks here on this issue, that you guys came to show your opposition to this? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. Councilmember Brendel.
You mentioned Helen passing out this petition. Who is Helen?
Helen is the Helen, last name, she was in the news. She was, her name is, got her last name here, Morigian. She lives north of the VA, and she's one of the persons who brought the petition to get it onto the ballot, but she used District 7's office, and was in communication with District 7's office, to get the petition, to get it on the agenda item here for city council to vote for.
Gotcha. Wow.
But she doesn't live in our neighborhood. She lives north of Clinton. We are south of Clinton.
Understood.
And we have, I've lived there for 30 years. The argument is that people will come and park in our neighborhood. We don't have a problem with that, at all.
Okay. Thanks for clearing that up.
Thank you. And I think, as you mentioned, Councilmember Olivier, if we could get an update as a council to figure out, and I don't know if we suspend enforcement, and how we can do that, because obviously, that's an issue...
We'll put an agenda item up next week.
But enforcement is supposed to start on Monday.
Council President, I'm going to ask the city manager, on behalf of the community, to hold off all enforcement action until we're able to come back and look at this.
I'm absolutely okay with that. I'm absolutely...
Is it our Parking Department that would enforce this?
If, yes. If council would, I mean, we've had three or four people talking about it. First thing I'd like to tell you is, don't panic. Like, this is, everything's okay. Don't panic. We'll take care of it. And if you'll offer me an opportunity to speak, I'll be happy to address this issue.
Do you need a couple of weeks?
I'll put it on the agenda next week.
No question. I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
even aware that they have to pay, that the city's requiring them. There is some concern about privacy. I'm very big about my privacy. The, the, the letter's asking us to give the city personal information, information about people in my home, about people who have cars in my home. I don't think that's okay. So, privacy is a big issue for me, too. But overall, the sign shouldn't even be there if we didn't ask for them, if we're telling you that we don't have a problem with it.
Thank you, Hector.
Thank you.
Councilmember Olivier, are you gonna say anything else, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
I know Councilmember Bredafield wanted to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, I wanna be clear, City Manager, are, this is supposed to go into enforcement on Monday. Are you officially gonna suspend this and notify the VA?
Yes, we can hold tight, and Thomas, can you mind, could you mind coming up here for a second, please?
City Manager, if, if I could, can I address my council colleagues on this issue? Okay. Thank you. Um, I'm trying to gather my thoughts, so that way I can give you a timeline of, of what happened. For thirty years, the VA has, the impetus for all this was that for decades, the VA just allowed their employees to park in the residential neighborhood surrounding the hospital. The eight years that I've been in, that has continued. The VA has constantly promised that they would do something to address the parking The constituent that circulated the petitions, and I've seen the petitions, and they don't, they says on the top of the petition Parking District, doesn't say Neighborhood Watch on the, on the, on the petition. The, the constituent was motivated enough to go out and get the petition. The petition was not a, a legal document, the petition merely was given to me to say, "Hey, Councilmember, this is a situation that require, a grave situation that requires your immediate attention." The administration, the Police Department, the Parking Department, where Dell Estabrook was in charge of the Parking Department at the time, police went out and they counted the cars in the neighborhood. They found six hundred eighty-five cars in the neighborhood surrounding the VA. This has been a source of constant complaint from my office of VA employees pitching cigarette butts on their lawn, of VA employees littering, of VA employees moving trash cans so that they could park on trash day, and we had constant complaints coming to our office on a weekly basis about people who couldn't get their trash picked up. What we've been able to gauge by the phone calls we've received to our office is that there are about thirty residences who are unhappy with the parking district. There are hundreds of residences who are pleased with what's happening. I think that what we have here is an area that may not really need to be covered by the parking district, and these adjustments are going to happen. This isn't something we're gonna slam in. For every phone call that we've received asking us some pretty serious questions and valid questions about the parking district, we've received a phone call from someone that is, is pleased with what's going on. So, I think it's also important to note to council that this is the most ambitious and largest parking district the city of Fresno has ever done in its history. In fact, you can add all other parking districts that the city does, you can add those together, and it still doesn't equal the sheer size and scope of this parking district. I'm also happy to report to council that since council voted on this, the VA, for the first time in decades, is taking steps to address the parking situation in that neighborhood. This is a big quality of life issue, and while I thank you for coming, and I respect the, the, the concerns that you've brought forward, and we're gonna address those, and the City Manager, I think, has shown her willingness to address them, and our Parking Department and this council as well, and I thank you for coming, this is a major, major issue in the neighborhood around the VA, and it's, it's, and you know what? When we put it off, let the phone calls come again for people that are saying, "Well, now I heard that you're not enforcing, why aren't you enforcing?" So I think that this is an issue of, you can please everyone part of the time, or, you know, you can, you can please all the people some of the time, or some of the people all the time, but you can't please all the people all the time. So I thank you for your concerns, council colleagues, I thank you, City Manager, for being a part of this. Thomas is here, Yahira Figuero is here, so what I would ask is, council, let's do an update next week. I'll put it on the agenda, we'll have Parking prepare an update, and for right now, concerned citizens, I would, if you would like to take advantage of the opportunity, we have our Parking Manager and my Chief of Staff are here, I'll go ahead and step away from council and join you in a brief meeting so that we can, at least hear you, all get on the same page with this, and then, Thomas, you and I can do a presentation to council next week. But this isn't, this isn't something that just, that's just popped up out of nowhere. I think that it, it, we probably could do some adjustments in some of these streets, but I think that the, the reality is, is if the city doesn't enforce it in, in some way, shape, or form, nothing gets done to alleviate the, the inconveniences of the people who live surrounding the VA. I think that this has been a good catalyst to get the VA to accept responsibility, that , that people's front yards are, are not, the, the neighborhoods on Yale and, and Princeton and immediately Terrace Avenue immediately surrounding the VA are not the parking lot for the VA's employees, that those are residential neighborhoods, and those people deserve to have a quality of life just the same as the people up at Champlain and Perrin. So, let's go ahead and step off with, with Thomas, who's the, the department head and the representative of our City Manager. Let's go in a conference room here, off to the side, and, and Yahira, we can meet everybody back there. So council, I thank you, and we'll get your report next week.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Bredafield?
Yeah, I just wanna add one thing. I mean, I'm sympathetic to what Councilmember Olivier's saying about the people in his district, but I wanna point out, it's not just VA employees that have been parking, it's veterans who have been parking for years through access services at the VA Hospital. So I, I understand the concerns, I mean, I've been witness to that for twenty-seven years as I've worked at the VA. There are veterans who park there, and I can understand why some people don't want it, but I also understand these folks here who don't have a problem with it, and certainly I, I don't understand why we would be issuing a parking pass, for, for, one parking pass for people. I mean, they shouldn't be inconvened either, I mean, they should be able to park there as well. So I certainly appreciate the, the concern about the signs, but I just want, want people to understand, veterans have been parking there, I can't speak to, you know, the VA and some of the parking issues that they probably needed to address for many years, but there are veterans who are, who are accessing services and, and parking and doing so appropriately on public streets. So I just also wanna know, are you suspending the rules? I, I think people need to know, is that happening, or what?
Point of order, City Attorney, is this, this debate has gone on too far, and, I mean, is this, are we becoming, it, it's not an agendized item? Should we stop? I believe we should.
I think we've about reached the limits of what we should be doing in unscheduled communication. Yes.
Council President, if I may?
But, but each council member should have an equal chance, though.
Right.
I just wanna say, this is why I asked for two weeks on my item, so we can get it right the first time, and not go through things like this with a bad policy. That's all I had to say.
Well, let me ask the City Attorney. City Attorney, it seemed like the City Manager was saying they were going to suspend, I mean, I'm curious to know, because people are gonna be impacted, is the administration gonna suspend what's supposed to happen October fifteenth?
Since the issue has arisen, it would be good to get that clarification, yes.
And I'm gonna call up Thomas, 'cause we were just talking offline. Go ahead, Thomas, if you could address that, please.
Counsel, in municipal code, after you've taken action, created the district, it already allows for administration to handle the implementation. So as a part of the implementation, my recommendation would be to take Mr. Serta's neighborhood, which is in the southwest corner bordered by Clinton, Fresno, and State Route forty-one, and we can delay enforcement on that segment while we have these follow-up conversations. But the rest of it, where the neighborhood is more severely impacted, should begin enforcement on the fifteenth, as we've publicized.
So you're saying, south of Clinton, it will not be enforced, but north of Clinton, it will be?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that that was the clarification that folks wanted to know. So, thank you, Councilmember Olivier, for allowing us, your colleagues, to weigh in. I know that it's in your neighborhood, and so I, I am confident that you have been working on this, and that you'll bring something back, and-
No, I, I'm, the only thing I'm bringing back is an update.
Yeah, the update.
I think that the, the, the insinuation is, is that myself and my neighbors who live around the VA don't care about the sacrifices made by the men and women in uniform, and I resent that insinuation. This has absolutely nothing to do with veterans, and, well, I mean, this has absolutely nothing to do with veterans, and it has everything to do with the VA's decades-long unwillingness to deal with a serious situation, quality of life issue in the neighborhoods. And so, since this has been implemented, the VA is scrambling to address the needs of its veterans and its staff. They've even instituted valet parking for their veteran patients. So veterans who, who wish to avail themselves of the valet parking, the free valet parking, are able to do that. The veterans, let's face it, the VA would have never, ever addressed this issue had this body and the people in the neighborhoods not been courageous enough to stand up to them. The federal government doesn't care if veterans have parking spaces, the federal government doesn't care if your neighborhood goes to hell because there's so much parking there, you can't get a gardener to, to come to your house without double parking. The situation in the, in the neighborhoods directly surrounding the hospital is very serious, and so it's, it was because of the courage of the people in the neighborhoods, you folks, and the courage of the people in this body that are actually getting the federal government to care. And I think that that may be, and, and you know what? When they build their parking structure across the street, which they've been promising, but it looks like it may happen, when that happens, maybe we can just do away with the parking district. And that was, that's what I would like to see happen. But we have to keep the pressure on the federal government to act, because if we take the pressure off, they never will, and the next guy to come into this seat is gonna be dealing with this the same way as me.
Okay, and I, I just wanna be clear, that's not what I was inferring, council members, that your people don't care about the sacrifice of veterans. I'm just pointing out, clearly that veterans are also parking in there. I know that for a fact, it's not just VA employees, and so I'm concerned about, you know, the incredible hassle that veterans have had to go through. It's not a, yeah, it has nothing to do with that.
Okay, thank you. We will move on, one more, on-
Council President, I think I've-
Is it on, is it on this issue? 'Cause I think that-
Yeah, but I have something completely different to add. All right. I want, when we come back in a couple of weeks to discuss this neighborhood, we need to, we need to talk about conquering the problem once and for all, and that, and that has to deal with the VA. I mean, we love, everybody in this room loves veterans, but the VA Hospital is a business, and we don't let, this would never happen in North Fresno to these folks right here, just want you to know that. Would never happen. We demand our businesses create the number of parking spots necessary for that business, okay? Matter of fact, we've gone to great lengths in this council to make sure North Fresno neighborhoods are not interrupted inefficiently. So I won't, I have a lot of empathy for these folks that spoke this morning, for sure. And I think that we have got to take serious, the long-term solution that includes the right number of parking spo- spots for the VA. I know that the city of Fresno, the Airport Director, who was here earlier today on another issue, they're going, they've outgrown the number of parking stalls at the Fresno Airport, they're gonna build a structure to add additional parking. You know, these are the type of things we're gonna have to look at. It's not fair to these neighborhoods to have overflow parking, it's not fair for the veterans to be, have to park out in the neighborhoods, as well as the employees. So there's a lot of things going on there that I think we need to tackle if we're really, truly gonna get serious about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brenda. So we have one other unscheduled communication. Dave Love, if you wanna come on forward, state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes.
My name's, my name is David Love, I'm from City District, oh, the, the address is five, seven, zero, seven, East Huntington, apartment two oh five. I'm from City District number five, I'm the first punk saint, work with Caleb Ministry Light of the World. I notice that there's been a lot of, um, a lot of individuals over there with their, I noticed the lady that's going against Jose Bobazar from the beginning, and her associates of her, their, um, their, their associates of Cocoon, Satan's Work, that they are harming And I noticed that their associates of, I believe it's Monaline's Church, the church that is doing Cocoon, Satan's Work, of harming individuals. I noticed that there's certain houses over there that does it, and they, they do Cocoon to harm individuals in the City District number five. Also, I believe that Jose Bobazar got harmed, and I'm speaking on behalf of Jose Bobazar, and also City District number five, and also want to know, before that, I just want to let you guys know that our associates that's working with the lady that's going against Jose Bobazar, they burn holy bibles. I just wanna know when's, um, there's about, there's about six houses that I noticed that's what, that's doing Cocoon. Cocoon is known as Satan's Work. Six houses on Sunny Side and Beck, four houses on Tuller and Purdue, one house where this is Circle Street. There's also those apartments, Creekside Apartment, Oakbrook Apartment. And I believe that, that ladies that's trying to run for City District number five are disapproved of, because this are, they're working with, Cocoon is known as Satan's, it does harm. They're trying to overtake the City District over there with the population of doing harm of Cocoon, Satan. I just wanna know when's the, the voting for, I noticed that it's on November sixth, two thousand and six, two thousand and eighteen?
Yes, so elections are November sixth, all, all day, I think, polls open at eight in the morning and close at eight P.M.
Eight in the morning?
Thank you.
Yeah, um-
Your, your time's up, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank, thank you.
I just wanna voice.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to item three C, and my council colleague, Councilmember Brenda, will take over.
All right. As Council President said, item three C, that's actions pertaining to the sale of APN four-six-seven dash zero-four-zero-twenty ST, consisting of approximately two hundred sixteen, four hundred and thirty-nine square foot surface parking lot downtown Fresno.
Real quick, I need to note that Council President Soria is recusing herself because of conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Council Laura Gloria, Deputy City Manager. The item before you is the approval of a purchase and sale agreement for approximately two hundred and sixty thousand square feet parking lot located on H Street between Kern and Mono to Fresno Sports and Event Partners and the corresponding finding of a categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA. The city of Fresno currently owns the aforementioned property, and it's primarily used for event parking at Chitansy Stadium. The city was, received a letter of interest from Fresno Sports and Event Partners, an affiliate company of, an agency that currently manages the Chitansy Stadium for the city of Fresno. The city subsequently engaged its asset managers in negotiations, and we landed on a sales price of one point nine million dollars. The, to Council Soria, Council President Soria's previous comment regarding the proceeds, the staff report does point out that the proceeds will go into the Asset Sale Reserve Fund per the Asset, or Reserve Management Act, excuse me. Our office is here, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Laura. I'm gonna, before I come up to council, I'm gonna go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who would like to address this item? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna come back up to council, and Councilman Bredafield?
Yes, thank you. I'm fully supportive of this, and I think it's, it's, it's good that we're getting out of the business with that, with that lot. out of the business with that lot. What I am thinking about as I was reading this item is that we, as a council and as a policymaking body, ought to decide where some of that money ought to go, that $1.9 million. And I'm reminded of the budget when we debated the extra money, the $2.4 million, and we had our police chief and our fire chief come up and talk about some needs. You know, we still have problems with the 911 dispatchers. There are people who still wait four or five minutes on 911, well, obviously, there's an emergency. That, I think that is unacceptable to all of us. And I think as a policymaking body, we ought to determine what we do with that $1.9, and we ought to commit it to public safety. And so, I would request and ask that the council support having a workshop next week where we have the police chief and the fire chief come before the council and express some of their needs in terms of how we could utilize that money to make our city safer. Obviously, one of the most important things is the 911 dispatch, but, you know, the fire chief, the police chief talked about all kinds of needs from replacing vehicles that had 200,000 miles or more, but obviously, 911 is a critical need for us. So I would like to have a workshop next week and get the police chief and the fire chief to discuss using those funds. I'd like to have a timed item, and frankly, I would like that to be under Council President Soria and myself in terms of that workshop. And then I'd like to have staff return in two weeks with budget amendments to appropriate those funds for public safety.
You know, I would like to point out, and Mike, Mike Lima, do you mind coming up here? So, and Laura mentioned this too, and this was a decision that council already made. And Mike, do you remember when we did the Reserve Management Act amendment?
December 7, 2017.
And can you give a very brief overview of what council already did with the amendment, and how the sale of, the proceeds from the sale will go, be deposited in the account?
Could you repeat that? What's the amendment we were referring to?
It was the Reserve Management Act amendment that you all considered and approved in December of last year.
Yeah.
And it already addresses the funds from asset sales. And so, this body has already made that decision. Go ahead, Mike.
So what's going to happen with this money? Million nine is going to go into this fund. It's called the Asset Sale Reserve Fund. And what the Reserve Management Act says, that over a five-to-10-year period, we're going to spend down that million nine. We're going to come to council as part of the budget and say, this million nine is out here, and we're going to spend it, the mayor recommends that we spend it in this manner over a five-to-10-year period. The Reserve Management Act says 10% of that money has to go to capital projects, and the other 90% could go to operating. So it's entirely possible that the million nine, 90% of it, will be spent over a five-year period on public safety, on accountants, I make a pitch right now, or anything else that's out there. So, but that is available. But in other words, the plan is already set. This council adopted the plan back in December of how this money is going to be spent.
And it's something that we will look at as we build the budget in upcoming years as well.
Yeah, and at the same time, this council can come back and say, we want to use the money now. Is that correct?
Uh, no. Right now, the Reserve Management Act spells out that it will come back as part of the adopted budget, and will...
Adopted next year, you're talking about?
Yes. The FY '20 budget.
Okay, and I have a question for you, City Attorney. Can a council change that when you use the $1.9 or $500,000 or whatever if they determine they want to use it for 911 dispatchers?
Yes, an act approved by council can be changed by council too.
Okay, so that's what I thought. I mean, the council can, is, is the policymaking body can change a policy at any time they want to change it. It takes four or five, depending on if the mayor wants to veto. So, you're not correct that the council can't do it, the council can do it. So, I would again request that we have our police chief and fire chief come before this council and discuss the needs of public safety that we all run on, campaign on, and find acceptable when people call 911 and they don't get a response for five minutes. That is unacceptable to me. It ought to be unacceptable to everybody. And I understand we have this, the Asset Management Act I supported, we voted for it, I'm sure I voted for it. But at the same time, we have some very critical needs in this city, and we ought to be addressing it. So, I would again say that I'm going to put a timed item under Council President Soria and my name for the fire chief and police chief to come before the council. And again, City Attorney, I would request that we have an appropriation amendments initiated in two weeks. And I hope the council would be willing to support addressing those needs.
Councilman Baines.
Thank you, Council Vice President. First, I'd like to make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation. And just, just a good conversation, Councilmember Brettafeld. I will say though, it's always appropriate to come in here, have department heads present the needs, their needs to this body. I don't have any issue with that whatsoever. But I actually think that the way that we amended the Reserve Management Act is pretty appropriate for what we're trying to do. It, I don't, I don't think that in what we did, and probably was unanimous, I would suspect, is kind of in line with this asset sale. This is in no way, as I understand it, unless Mike or Will are going to correct me, prohibits the council during the, during the budget season to appropriate these dollars based on the guidelines that we set forth. So, I actually think that's the most appropriate time to discuss those types of issues is during the budget season. And both the police department and fire department have been here through our budget process this past year and discussed that length, their needs. So, happy to have them come back, but I think this body is going to have the opportunity to decide on that $1.9 million in the budget, in the normal budgeting process next year, as I hear it correct. And I don't have a problem with that.
That's correct.
You know, I actually think that's the appropriate time to discuss, to discuss those issues. But again, I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with having the police and fire chief come and, come and discuss to us what their immediate needs are.
Can I just respond one thing?
Sure.
I completely agree. It was probably a 7-0 vote, I'm sure. So theoretically, we certainly agree when we sell assets, we want to be able to take a look at it, involve it in a budget process, but at the same time, we have pressing needs that we didn't address in the budget, which is 911 dispatchers and people calling 911 who aren't getting a response. It's supposed to be within 15 seconds. And for a significant amount of people, they're waiting on the line five minutes. That ought to be something that we don't wait for another year in a budget process. That ought to be something that we deal with in the immediate, and we have a right to do that. So, you and I are not in disagreement about the overall concept of the asset management. We all support it, but I think we ought to be, when this money has come up, we have this sale right now, and we have pressing needs, I just think we ought to address it in the immediate.
No, and that's fair.
I'd like to point out too, though, that I...
I think that we hired dispatchers and we actually appropriated a few extra positions for dispatchers in the, did we not, in our, this last budget cycle? We kept it static?
I want to also be mindful, I feel like it's, I mean, we just had this conversation at budget, that we're not looking at this one-time revenue that's coming in for ongoing expenses, right? And I do think that we just had a conversation not too long ago with both chiefs about their pressing needs, et cetera. And so, I don't think you're going to learn anything new if we do bring the chiefs back, and I'm happy to talk with you about that further.
No, I think it's important to, since we didn't address it adequately in our budget process, and we have this critical problem, I think we ought to have the police chief and fire chief come before the council and speak to the community about really what's going on.
Well, Councilmember, I think, I think that none of us have an objection to that.
Except the city manager.
Well, no, I don't, I don't think the city manager has an objection to, to those department heads coming and talking to this body about their needs. But the final point I'll make, and I don't have an objection with that either, that's a, that's a fair conversation, but the final point I'll make is, you know, we could make that very same request to all of the department heads in this city, and they would come stand before us and tell us that they all have pretty pressing needs.
It's a little different with 911.
Well, well, you know, maybe in your estimation, but not everyone's. So, there are a number of priorities in this city that we, we try to carefully balance. We don't necessarily knock it off the park every time with the way that we balance it, but I do think that the budgeting process is the appropriate time to make those decisions. But again, I have no problem with having them come talk to us. Thank you, Council Vice President.
All right, Councilman Chavez.
Thank you. Just one quick question for the administration. I know that it's around that time of the year where we do mid-year budget adjustments, and we kind of check our revenue streams and see if they've penciled out. When do we anticipate having that conversation?
We're hoping by the end of the calendar year.
Okay, well, because I think, I think...
I think last year we did it early, I mean, January or so.
Right.
But we're hoping by the end of the calendar year this year.
Okay, because I think that, that could probably be the conversation, maybe if there's not support to just do it piecemeal, have that broad conversation, and make sure that the revenues that we're getting in actually are what we projected on that. Thank you.
Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you. To my colleague Brettafeld, I would suggest perhaps that you request the financials on five or 10 dispatchers, so we'll know what the price would be and what the ongoing price would be. So you probably couldn't get everything you wanted on a dispatcher basis, but perhaps if you broke that number down, you could come up with something that, that I think you're trying to drive home, which is the 911 dispatchers. Just a suggestion, my friend.
Is that it, Councilman? All right, my only additional comments are, were that when Councilmember Soria mentioned this in her council comments time, it, it sounded very reasonable, and I think that definitely 911 dispatchers are a very high priority for me as well. The fact that, the fact that we've already voted to connect this to the Reserve Management Act, I'm glad that we're going to have a little bit of time to digest where we should put this money. So we would have to reverse a decision that we made earlier as a body. That's always an extra challenge for me. I make that a little extra hurdle. If we've already made that decision, I'm going to take a little time to, to revisit that. I did not know that when Councilmember Soria made her comments this morning. So, I think it's all a good conversation. I think today we need to move forward. We have strong council members with strong opinions that are going to require this to come back for further discussion. But for today, we have a motion to, and it's to sell the parking lot, right? We have a motion and a second by Councilman Capriolio, and motion by Councilman Baines. And so, I think we should move forward with the execution of that vote today and that sale, and then we can come back and have vigorous debate on where the $1.9 million will eventually end up. So, have I gone out to the public? I've gone out to the public. So, the screen is clear, so to speak. Do any other council members have any comments before we vote? All right, are there any objections to this motion? All right, then the motion count passes 6-0 with Member Soria recused. Yeah, thank you. And then, until she gets back, we'll move on to item 3D, actions relating to initiating the Prop 218 process for proposed changes to the schedule of rates for water, wastewater, and solid waste services.
If, just point of order, if I could say to my council colleagues, I appreciate your patience this morning with the, my neighbors who came forward to talk about the parking situation at the VA. And we had a little meeting with the neighbors and the parking department, and also the planning department. I think we have a, we have a good solution. So, next week, when we bring that back for everyone to listen to that, I think you'll be really pleased with, with the solution. And you know, the city government here works for people, it really does, that you can come to city council on some issue and address this council and get a resolution to your problem. I think that's a really good indication of the caliber of people that we have here. So, thank you all, city manager and council.
Morning, Council President, City Council Members, Mike Carbajal, Department of Public Utilities. I just want to start off by thanking you and your staff for taking the opportunity to meet with me during the past week to start this conversation. To continue that, I've got about a 10 to 15-minute presentation here to talk about the recommendations for the proposed public utilities rate plans. Quick summary of the presentation today. We'll go over the rate plan objectives. We'll also talk about, or provide a quick overview of the water, wastewater, and solid waste rate plans. To understand how that affects our customers, we'll take a look at the single-family rates, talk about the importance of the utility affordability credit program, as well as the DPU facility. We'll provide a breakdown of how we invest our rates compared to other California cities, and take a look at the timing, schedule, and follow up with, and finalize with recommendations. Are you seeing the screen, are you seeing it on your end, or is it, it's a dark screen? Got it on my screen. There it is. All right, in terms of rate plan projectives, objectives, Department of Public Utilities is tasked with providing three essential services that ensure the health and safety of the community. That includes reliable, safe and reliable water, wastewater, and solid waste services. And in doing so, we must update and provide five-year schedules that forecast our revenues and make sure that they cover the cost of providing those services day in and day out. In addition, we want to make sure that our rates comply with the California Constitution, Article 13D, and that's to make sure that the rates are fair and equitable across all customer classes. I'll move over to the water rate plan. So taking a look at the proposed water rates, 2020 rate plan is based upon adequately funding our operations and maintenance activities. This is the, the day-to-day cost of providing the service. We will also invest in rehabilitating our aging infrastructure. You'll recall that the prior water rate plan was heavily focused on new surface water infrastructure and pipelines. This rate plan transitions back to focusing on our existing assets and making sure that they provide consistent service without interruption. We will continue to fund our debt service costs into the future and ensure that we have adequate fund reserves for emergencies, future periods of drought and economic downturns. I want to point out that this rate plan does not, has no rate increase proposed until July 1st of 2020. Some noteworthy new state regulations that we are currently dealing with. The first one is 123 TCP, and 123 TCP is, is present in a number of our groundwater wells. Maximum contaminant level was established January 1st of 2018. Since that time, we've been sampling our wells. Thirteen of them have already been removed from service. We have another six that have exceeded the MCL. They have remained in service by utilizing existing wellhead treatment systems. We have 40 wells that we are monitoring TCP detections in, and we anticipate that three to four of those wells will be, will have to come offline before the end of the year. In addition to that, we have SB 606 and AB 1668, and were approved in May of 2018. And these, these are conservation measures that were mandated during the severe drought 2014 and 2015, and these regulations make those mandates permanent and, and are rolled up into the saying, you know, water conservation is a California way of life. Water conservation is important for ensuring that our water resources are preserved and available for future generations, but at the same time, we must make sure that our rate plan and our projections incorporate this anticipated conservation going forward. So now, taking a look at the water capital plan. As I mentioned, the majority of this, this rate plan is focused on repair and rehabilitation in terms of water wells and pumps. We operate over 250 wells. Life expectancy for a well is typically 50 years. We, right now, have 40 wells that are operating beyond their service life. Similar story with our pipelines. Life expectancy for a pipeline is 50 to 100 years. We have about 1,800 miles of pipeline in the system, and over 700 miles have exceeded and surpassed a 50-year mark. In terms of recharge, we will continue to invest in recharge facilities and cooperate with our partnering agencies to meet the requirements of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And lastly, uh, we have a component of the rate plan focused on a new DPU facility. That's an admin and maintenance facility that will allow the water division to relocate out to Southeast Fresno. And I'll talk more about that, uh, in the presentation. All right. So jumping over to the wastewater rate plan, uh, in fiscal year 2020, so year one, uh, the rate plan is recommending a cost allocation to adjust the customer classes, the rates of, among customer classes based upon how they use the current wastewater system. So this gets back to meeting our objective to comply with the California conster- constitution, having fair and equitable rates across customer classes. Uh, important to note that there is no increase in total revenue generated in year one, so it's revenue neutral. But it does result in a reduction in the single family as well as multifamily residential rates. In fiscal years, uh, 21 through 24, uh, we are recommending, uh, gradual rate increases to support increased, uh, operational costs since the previous rate increase was implemented in September of 2010. So it will, so the wastewater division will have gone 10 years without a raging rate increase, and we are very fortunate to come in now 10 years later and recommend low-impact, small gradual rate increases. Uh, we will also fund utility repair, replacement, upgrade costs. And we are currently reviewing a new state permit for the wastewater treatment plant, uh, that will drive some new projects. In terms of the wastewater capital plan, uh, the treatment facility, repair and replacement, we're looking at about a $42 million investment to rehabilitate, uh, projects in the headworks building, uh, some of the solids treatment process infrastructure such as our digesters. And, uh, in terms of effluent handling, uh, improvements to our ponds and canal systems. Uh, I mentioned the permit that we are currently reviewing right now. That's going to drive some projects that we're recommending a 30, $30 million investment to start the design work that will reduce the contaminant levels of the effluent, uh, coming out of the treatment facility. Uh, we, we also must monitor for expansion. And we are programming during this five-year plan, the need to construct an additional digester. Uh, so that's, uh, programmed in fiscal year 24. Now, jumping over to the collection system. Again, we operate about 1,600 miles in the sewer collection system and 550 miles of that system has surpassed a 50-year service mark. Some of those facilities actually date back to the 1800s. So the $32 million investment will include the repair and rehabilitation to make sure that, uh, we reduce the likelihood of sewer breaks, sewer spills, also investing in lift stations and access structures. In terms of the collection system expansion, again, similar to the treatment plant, we must monitor the system and make recommendations to expand when necessary. Uh, we're planning fiscal year 22, the need to increase the capacity of the sewer system in East Central Fresno. In addition, we are also looking to extend sewer system, uh, to customers that are presently on septic systems. Uh, in terms of water reuse, we have about $17 million in the program. That supports the continued build-out of the Southwest Recycled Water System as well as updating a recycled water master plan. Uh, you'll recall about two months ago, I did provide a workshop on that where we recommend updating the master plan to roadmap, uh, water reuse going forward. And you'll see a, a, a small investment in the DPU facility for the wastewater, uh, division. This supports the fleet, fleet maintenance component of the DPU facility, and that will service wastewater and sewer collection vehicles and equipment. Wastewater is not planning to relocate out to Southeast. And so now over to the solid waste rate plan. Uh, the rate plan proposes changes reflect the cost of providing service to each customer based upon the 96-gallon service. We also have some customers that do have a smaller 64-gallon container. Uh, in fiscal years 20 to 24, uh, we are recommending, uh, uh, rate, rate increases to support increase in operational costs since the last rate increase in September of 2009. So again, this is the second division that has not had to implement rates in the last 10 years. And very fortunate to, uh, to come back and have low-impact, small gradual rate increases that will cover the rising cost of maintaining our collection vehicles, fuel tipping fees, uh, labor and some of the ongoing cost of the closed landfill. Solid waste capital, capital plan, it's heavily focused on providing, uh, replacement of collection vehicles. We have about 100 vehicles that we currently use to provide service, uh, for residential solid waste. And about 60 of those vehicles are hitting the eight to 10-year mark. So that's about the life expectancy. Beyond that, those vehicles become, uh, less reliable and impact our ability to provide service. And so the $28 million investment in the next five years will allow us to replace 10 to 15 trucks a year. Uh, we, we will spend about $3 million on collection containers. Uh, the landfill costs us about $200,000 a year to meet the federal requirements for that closed landfill. And the solid waste, uh, share of the DPU facility is about $16 million. So how do those rates, uh, how, how do these rate plans affect our customers? Uh, the best way to look at that is through the single-family rates. Uh, we will also talk about the affordability credit program that we are recommending, and then we'll talk a little bit about the DPU facility. So in terms of the proposed single-family rates, uh, these costs are based upon the average annual water consumption, which is about 1,600 cubic feet. Uh, that's about 12,000 gallons a month. Uh, most of our customers have standard wastewater service and they have a 96-gallon container for, uh, trash as well as recycling and, and green waste. So if you look in the purple portion of the chart, the table above, under monthly bill, you'll see that the current rate totals up for all three services at $96.80, $96.86 in year one. Um, there is no rate increase proposed for water. Wastewater, the cost of service adjustment results in a decrease to the single-family bill at $1.20, and that's offset by the proposed increase on the solid waste portion of the bill, which is $1.7. Uh, at the end, it's, it's about a 13-cent decrease in year one of the rate plan. Over the next four years, we have those gradual rate increases. Uh, they will increase the bill by a total of $21.49. And the total bill in fiscal year 24 will be $118.35. That's about $4 a day or about one trip to the, through the Starbucks drive-through. So recognizing that Fresno has always had some of the lowest rates in California, uh, we're also sensitive to the fact that there is a portion of our customer base that does have trouble paying their bill. And so we are sensitive to that, and that's why we are recommending that we expand, uh, the former water affordability credit program and turn it into a utility affordability credit program. Uh, so council back in 2015, when the water rates were approved, uh, you made the decision to discontinue age-based senior discounts. And through these rate plans, we are continuing that by expanding the utility affordability credit program. It'll be funded to a million dollars a year. It uses non-rate revenue, so these are delinquent fines for those customers that don't pay on time. We turn that back around and offer that through a low-income credit, uh, to qualified customers. Uh, low-income seniors that may be impacted by this, uh, by discontinuing, discontinuing the senior rates will be eligible for the credit. By accessing it through one of the eligible programs, uh, this program does require approval of a resolution that we would bring back in December. And the current schedule for implementing these rates does allow for outreach to those customers to make sure we fully implement the program. Those customers who are most in need can complete the application process, and they are eligible for the discount when new rates are implemented.
Mike, can I ask you a question and interrupt you? So, which I think it's great. I think this council, um, approved a similar program for our water. But can you tell me how many people have actually signed up? Because if we look at the demographics of our city, I don't think enough people know about the program. And so I'm concerned that now that we're going to take off seniors, they're going to have to affirmatively apply. That's creating another barrier for folks. And so we have not done a really good job, at least from the numbers that I've heard, to get folks to apply for this affordability. It's a great thing, but I just, I don't know if I can, you know, trust that by just doing some promotion, folks are going to be able to access it. Because in the last three and a half years, we don't have a good track record of that.
So we have 2,585 customers who are currently, uh, receiving a credit on their bill. Yes, the, the program has additional funds and, and can be accessed by additional customers on the water side. Uh, the water rates that were implemented in 2015, they were, they were adopted in February, and those rates were implemented the following month. With this schedule here today, and we'll talk about that when we get to the schedule, this provides us the ability to go out and do the outreach. We'll work with our marketing partners. We'll make sure that those customers, um, know that there's a program that's available to them. And we want, it's their money. We want to make sure that when we charge the delinquent fines, that we funnel that right back to them and help offset their bill to, to help them, uh, you know, pay their bill on time and make it affordable for them. So we'll talk, we can talk more about that. So now I want to spend a couple of minutes just talking about the DPU facility. The water division has been operating out of the University Avenue facility since the 1950s. If you've been to that site, um, it's pretty apparent that that facility exceeded its useful life about two decades ago. Solid Waste has been operating at the Municipal Service Center since the 1970s. Uh, it competes for space within that facility with Public Works as well as Department of Transportation and the fleet maintenance facilities that are ongoing there. Uh, recognizing this, Mar- in March of 2018, council authorized the analysis to relocate solid waste and water out to the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility. That analysis also incorporated the reutilization of space for the remaining tenants of the mi- of the municipal service center. And so what that means is those remaining tenants will be, uh, better able to, a- and will reduce their investment to reutilize the space that is vacated by the solid waste division. Our recommendation is we own the property at the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility. Uh, we've got about 20 acres and we could construct an administrative operations, uh, warehouse facilities as well as the fleet and equipment parking areas to support both divisions. Uh, the fleet maintenance facility would also have a, a fleet maintenance facility that would, um, support the wastewater management division vehicles and collection system. And that's why you'll see a component of their capital program includes about $4 million for the facility. So taking a look at how our rates are invested, we took this, the single-family rates and we broke it down by percentage. And you can see that about two-thirds of the bill, so when our customers pay their bill, about two-thirds of that directly goes to operations and maintenance. That's the cost of providing services day in, day out. Uh, the remaining one-third goes, is split between debt service as well as pay-as-you-go capital improvement projects. And you'll see that a small component, in terms of the overall revenues that are generated by these rate plans, a small component does go towards the DPU facility. So how do our rates compare to other California cities? Uh, we've always had some of the lowest rates in California, and even with the proposed rate increases, Fresno utility r- rates will remain among the lowest in California. And it's important to note that when we look at the, the F, the fiscal year 24 bar, we are comparing that, those rates, five years down the road, to those rates that are currently in place to other cities across California. It's very likely that other cities have rate plans and they will be implementing future rate increases during this timeline as well. And now on to the timing and schedule. Uh, why are we recommending that we take action now? Well, as I mentioned, it provides adequate time and flexibility to implement the rates. Uh, there's an, there is an adjustment in a, in a period here for our ratepayers to prepare. We must also reprogram the billing system. So it's not one rate plan, it's three. We need to make sure that the billing system accurately, accurately reflects those rate plans and we do the quality control checks to make sure that our customers are, are being charged the right amount. Uh, and of course, the utility affordability credit program, uh, we, this will allow us the time to outreach, make sure customers access that credit when those rates take effect. Uh, most importantly, we just want to make sure our customers are prepared. Uh, we have services that we, that we can provide that would help with conservation, that could also reduce their bill, and we want to give them adequate warning and allow them to make adjustments. Terms of schedule, uh, today we are recommending that we authorize the Prop 218 process, so we are not raising rates today. This is just a recommendation to, uh, engage the public. Mailers would go out on October 22nd, and we would recommend that on December 6th, we hold a public hearing. During that time, uh, we would like to conduct a public meeting, make sure our, our public is, is fully informed about the process. And, uh, going forward, uh, new rates would become effective in July of 2019. So the recommend, recommendations today are to initiate the Prop 218 public participation process, set the public hearing date for December 6th, and allow us to bring back a resolution to expand the affordability credit program, uh, on the 6th as well. That concludes my presentation. Look forward to the discussion and the questions. Thanks.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and go out to the public. Um, is there anyone in the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. I don't know, we may not have really noticed it out too much to the public, for the public to be here, which I'm kind of concerned, but. Where's the community? Councilmember, Councilmember Baines, did you try to punch up?
Well, thank you, uh, Mike. That was a, a, a pretty, uh, thorough presentation. I appreciate that. I just want to, uh, you know, the, you know, candidly, you all know I say it how I, I see this, this is in jeopardy today. There, there's a good chance that it may not, uh, pass this body, but I'll be supportive. I, I think the, the rationale is correct. And I, you know, uh, I'll walk through what some of my reasons are for being supportive of this. But Mike, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to come back up here really quick. And I went back, went back to a slide in your presentation where you discussed the wastewater capital plan. It's 170, 170, uh, well, almost 179 million dollar, uh, investment. And can you talk to me a little bit in, in detail about the collection system capacity expansion? What, what exactly, what is that exactly?
Yeah, so the plan is in fiscal year 22, uh, we've been monitoring our, um, our sewer collection system and in the area of Clovis Avenue, just north of 180 down to Chestnut, in the intersection of Chestnut and Washington. And so this is a, a pipeline that we've been monitoring in terms of, of its capacity, and we've known for a period of time that, that we were going to have to make improvements there. So thi- this is just part of the process of monitoring the system and making sure that as the city grows, that the infrastructure is in place to support that. And that's one area that we know we will have to make an improvement. And so that project, we're looking at about a 23 to 24 million dollar investment there.
And, um, talk a little bit about some of the permit and regulatory required upgrades, because we're spending 30 million on that. What are some of the, and you may have covered it and I could have missed it, but what are some of the, what are some of the, uh, regulatory upgrades we're going to need to have?
Yeah, so the facility, obviously permitted by the state overseeing there. And so our permit does, um, come, come up for review every so often. And right now, we've been going through that process. We have, uh, we've actually reviewed the permit. We've responded to it with comments. But what we do know is that the state continues to, uh, tighten up its regulations on the discharge that comes out of the plant. And so, um, we will have to implement and anticipating some side-stream treatment that will reduce contaminant levels. And that, uh, work will start off with feasibility and design work, um, early on in this rate plan, fiscal year 20 to 22. We're not anticipating construction in the rate plan. We're anticipating that's, that's outside of that, but we have to start making that investment, uh, to prepare for those types of improvements. And part of that is, is also through, uh, water reuse. Some of those facilities also allow us to reduce those contaminant levels. So it's about roadmapping, how do we comply with those permits and making sure that we're in compliance with the state at all times.
And the collection system R and R?
Collection system R and R, it's, we have pipes in the ground. As I said, some of those date back to the 1800s. And there's about 1,600 miles of pipeline out there, and it, it needs constant repair, replacement. And that's just an investment to make sure that that system is fully functional. It's providing the service day in, day out. What we don't want are breaks in that system. We don't want sewage spills. And so that just means that we have to get out there, identify those areas, assess the condition, and then we program dollars to go out there and, and repair and replace them as needed.
And if, and if I remember correctly, you said the last time we raised rates in wastewater was a decade ago?
Yeah, by time, uh, so the first year of this rate plan is a cost-of-service adjustment, and so it's revenue neutral. And so by time, the first rate increase is effective, which would be fiscal year 21. Uh, that will, you know, a full 10 years will have passed without raising rates. I think we've been good fiscal stewards. Uh, the revenues we've collected, I think we're very fortunate that we could go that period of time, and then we can reach this point and not have very, very steep increases. I think as we go down the road, the likelihood exists that we're going to start to see double-digit rate increases if we don't take advantage of the fact that we can have very smooth and incremental rate increases now.
Yeah. So, you know, where you, where you left off is, is one of the main reasons. Yeah. So, you know, where you left off is one of the main reasons while I'm supportive. You know, I hear a lot of, no policymaker of any sort likes to raise rates. And, and we don't, I don't like to raise rates either. One of the things I learned when I came into this building a few years ago, when we had to make the significant improvements to our, to our water system, is that councils before us at the time had, and I'll use my good friend, Councilmember Capriolio's statement, if you'll let me, Councilmember, kicking the can down the road. So I kind of looked at what you all are suggesting, that the system upgrades that we, that we need, and they seem reasonable. And it seems at some point, we're probably gonna have to do this work. And so it's been suggested by a couple of my colleagues that we can, we can do this later, or, you know, for better for worse, we can, we can do it later. And I would just remind my colleagues that we, you know, we've been there and we've done that. We've done the whole later thing, you know, letting other council, letting, well, other council members did that to us when we had to take pretty painful votes to, you know, do 100, 200% increases. So here we are talking about very incremental increases, 1%, 6%, in some cases, in some cases, we're actually lowering rates. And I think this is very, I think this is the proper approach. Every five years or so, I think should, this body should come and have to make decisions on rates, because to me, it's a much easier movement for, for our residents, to do incremental, small rate increases on the infrastructure needs that we have, as opposed to, you know, massive increases at one time. So, so I'll just implore to my colleagues, you know, you can not vote today, and then we could not ask for rate increases today, but, you know, unless all of us want to just wait until we're off the council to another council has to do it, then those rates are just gonna be much higher for the residents. And I think that's a disservice to our residents for us to, at this point, knowingly, again, kick the can down the road to another council where we can suspect that these rates would be much higher, the increases recommended would be much higher. So for that reason, I'm fully supportive. I also want to commend you on the low-income plan. I do share some sentiment with Council President Soria, just making sure that we do a robust job of advertising that program, because I think that we'd like a lot more subscribers, you and I talked about in the past. And I think that you all are trying to figure out ways to actually increase subscription to the low-income plan. I think it's something that we asked for years ago, when we did the first rate increase, you guys have taken that, kept it in there, and even extended it to the other utilities. So I appreciate that, but also want to encourage ways to make sure that we get our subscription higher. And lastly, what I, what I really like too about this proposal is the fact that we're combining all of the utilities together, instead of having council members have to do multiple rate increases over multiple utilities through various stages of a year or a tenure in office. You know, this really, this really consolidates it, so we take one vote, one time, at one time, as opposed to having to discuss rate increases a number of times. So I think it's a smart way to do it, and I'm supportive of this. I like, I like the fact that the improvements that we've made in our entire utility system, particularly in water, this, we should be proud of our water system here in Fresno. We took some pretty extreme measures in order to protect our water system and do right by our residents. And I think the vote, the vote and support of this today continues that type of forward thinking that this body has already exhibited on behalf of this community when it comes to, to our utilities. So with that, I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Great. So we've reached the lunch hour. I think what I'm gonna go ahead and do, because we still have a number of things on the agenda, we're gonna recess for now. I know that there's a number of my colleagues that want to have their comments and inputs and questions answered on this very important issue. So we'll go ahead and reconvene at 1:30. We'll break for lunch now, come back, we'll discuss this, and then we have a couple other things, and then we'll go to closed session at the end of the meeting. Thank you. And then we'll come back to the, to the hearing. So we'll do item four, which is a resolution adopting the Frencher Creek Parkway Act, and also the resolution initiating the Frencher Creek, Creek, excuse me, Parkway Concept Plan pursuant to Fresno Municipal Code, Section 154902. Councilmember Chavez?
All right. Thank you, President Soria. So I'll kind of give a little bit of background on this. This started off as a community cleanup out at Frencher Creek, and kind of springboarded into having more of an in-depth conversation about the Frencher Creek Trailway. We did a cleanup there about, I want to say about three, four months ago. We've since then had two, and the last time, we had about 100-plus volunteers that came out. And so part of that community meeting and conversation was to actually designate this as an official Parkway. And what that means is that this would allow the city to actually go and secure some funding from the state, from the federal outlets. And so I wanted to, you know, bring this to council for consideration. There was some language that we added to ensure that our partners over at FID would be comfortable with it. And I met with Gary and Bill, stretched the incoming director, and they were fine with it. And then I also wanted to add some language in there for the administration on making sure that it's clear that as funding becomes available for this measure, we would incorporate this into what's called the master trailways agreement that we currently have with our partner at FID. And so with that, would absolutely appreciate a, a vote on this, and I'd like to make the motion for that.
I'll second it.
So there's a motion and a second. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. We'll come back to the dais. The screen is clear. So what we will do, if there's a motion, a second, any opposition? Seeing none. The motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Baines absent. Perfect. Awesome. So we're just trying to find Councilmember Baines for the next hearing where we'll be resuming. Item 3C. No, not, sorry, not 3C. What is it? 3D? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and resume. We'll resume. I think in the morning part of the meeting, we had Councilmember Baines wrap up his comments. Is that correct? So any of my colleagues who wish to punch up can punch up now. Councilmember Capriolio?
Well, I made a motion to approve, so if no one else has anything to say, we can vote.
Did I second that yet or not?
You seconded it.
Thank you.
Sounds like everybody's a little too shy to speak.
I think it's coming. Everybody wants the last comment. So, anyway, I wanted to thank Mike and your team for putting together that PowerPoint. It was fantastic, laid it all out brilliantly, in my view. Could you bring it back to the one, it was called, I had written it down. It was the, the one about advising people what's going on. It was a timeline, and the end of it addressed ratepayers and their ability to be involved with this. Darn it, I wrote it down. I can't, there you go. Perfect. Thank you. Anyway, again, thank you for the presentation. I don't have any questions for you just yet. But again, a great presentation and a great dialogue. I guess there's only two of us that are gonna speak, as I understand it. That's a joke. Anyway, the Councilmember Baines comments really reflected all the things I have to say about this particular situation. But I did want to ask our city attorney, on a procedural basis, what we're asking to do today and what that means figuratively and literally tomorrow. If we, what do we call on to do today and what would be the result?
Yeah, so today you're initiating the process and setting a final hearing date, which also sets timelines for sending out ballots and public participation and that sort of thing. So the most important thing is you're starting the process and setting a hearing date.
And that the hearing date would be the time for the public to really come down here and speak their minds, and that information we don't have today from the public, but we could get it then. And from that information provided by the ratepayers or our public, then we can make a decision and vote accordingly. Is that pretty much how we're laying this out?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure we're on the right track with what we're trying to do today. So my colleague indicated one of my statements from the beginning was, I don't want to be a council member that's kicked the can down the road. And I think you all have seen that time and time again. I do not kick the can down the road. And from that, I, we segued into the cleanup council. And we've cleaned up, I call them past transgressions of other councils that have sat in this seat and on this dais before us. And I really didn't want to be, continue to be a cleanup council member, but I have to do what I have to do. So rather than look back on those things, kicking the can and cleaning up, I have a new comment now. I want to call us the courageous council, the courageous council. And it takes courage to approve what's been asked for a gradual... I didn't hear you. No, I said, not the coward council, I said the courageous council. We have to be brave, we have to be bold. At any rate, it's, we are at a point where if we can approve the gradual increase, it will keep the cost of business flowing, because the cost of business requires that we make these adjustments. And by adjusting accordingly, that provides the great service to the community and to our ratepayers, our voters, our friends, our relatives. So we need to keep that in mind, in my view, so we can continue with this excellent service. So in thinking about this, I look back to, I think it was 2014, Steve, about the time you and I got started up here. And we were enthusiastic, and we didn't really understand the kick the can and cleanup council, but guess what? We were the cleanup council. In 2014, we were asked to double the existing rates, double them, from $26, as I recall, to $52. And why was that? Because there was no courage, because the previous council kicked the can down the road and let the next generation of leadership deal with these issues. That's not the way I lead. I lead from the front. So with that in mind, I would like to encourage my, my colleagues to look at the timing proposition that's on our screens, and the bottom line says outreach to customers, so they're fully informed. We can't even inform our customers of this unless we take a vote today to say yes. Let's show some courage, let's put this on the, on the record, let's have people understand what we're doing, evaluate what's going on, tell us if you like it or you don't, but at least give the people a forum to speak. So no vote today shuts all that down. Sorry, people, we're not interested, as opposed to giving an opportunity for all of us to come forward and voice our views and our opinions. That's what this whole democratic system is about. So with that, I just want to look at that timing line again and show what we can do and how we should go about it. and how we should go about doing it. So again, I don't want to be in that position or put someone in that position, because we did not do a gradual increase in rates, so a family could gradually put that in their budget, so a family could continue spending their dollars wisely, rather than receiving a bill like they did in 2014 that says, hey, guess what? We just doubled your bill. Sorry, we don't want that. We don't want that. We want people to come down, participate, tell us these things, and get involved with us. And for us to vote, I don't think it takes a lot of courage at this point to say we want to give that opportunity to the people. Let's initiate the process. And if it still doesn't appeal to my colleagues, then you vote no. You vote no. But we need to be bold, we need to be brave, we need to be courageous, and move this item forward. So with that, I'm happy to second the motion, and of course, I'll support public participation in this particular item. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Caprileo. I have, well, I guess Mayor, if you're punched up, no?
I was going to call for the question. I didn't think anybody else wanted to talk.
Thank you, council president. Just wanted to say a few words. First of all, I've been in your spot before. Steve Brandau and I were on, as he was a newly recruited councilmember, fresh off his tea party, and he took a tough vote that was against the core of his grain to approve recharge Fresno. I remember during that debate, I looked at a rate history chart that went back 30 years. I can't illustrate, it's like, it would go like 91, 92, 93, flat, 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 flat. Eight years later, it went up like 25%. It was a series of flat spikes, flat spikes, because it was essentially what Paul would say, kicking the proverbial can, this is a can of creamy tomato with basil, keep kicking the can down the road. Okay? So when you do that, ultimately, you're driving the cost up, and I'll explain that. So as Paul would say, if you don't do this, you're going to, some other council's going to have this, the same burden. Eventually, it's going to slide so far, it's so dysfunctional, it's like we had at the Grizzly Stadium about a couple of weeks ago at a major, you lost, a baseball game was canceled because we have a 50-year-old plumbing fixture that, or plumbing system that needs to be fixed. So we addressed a lot of it in the Water Capital Program, recharge, a lot still to go. So the timeline, I know people said, why are you rushing this? If we don't have this started, because Prop 218 defines the process, by, at the latest, next Thursday, it's going to go into 2019. And the importance of that is I believe that this council should make the final vote. I think it's really unfair to two new councilmembers that'll be in, you know, installed in January to have to immediately deal with this kind of issue. It's really not fair to them. I would like to keep it with the same council follows through that's been following this issue and goes through. So we did recharge Fresno. It was a $430 million program, and the centerpiece, as we've all seen a couple of weeks ago, was the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant that delivers, when it's at full capacity, 80 million gallons a day. Without this plant, we've guaranteed Fresno is one of the most secure water cities in the state of California. Prior to having a surface water treatment plant, we didn't have the capability to store water. Our recharged basins were simply insufficient. We would get in a good year, 150,000 acre feet from combination of Fryent and from Kings River, some cases up to 200,000, and we had the capacity, correct me if I'm wrong, of about 50, 60, 70,000. So we had to pay for the water and turn the water back. We're now in a position where we can store water, we can go through droughts and bank water, and we're one of the few cities that can do that. And one of the concerns there, it's always been a concern for every councilmember, every elect official, is this going to be done efficiently? Is it going to be done on time? Is it going to be done on budget? Is there a better way to do it? And let's take a look, and I'll refer to my colleague Clint Olivier, who co-authored the Enterprise Accountability and Oversight Act that put in safeguards and controls on how this process went. So we finished this process on time and on budget, and that's something we've not seen in previous major projects, but it's something we're seeing a model that's out there right now that we can deliver on time and on budget. And if we fail to do this, fail if we had not done that vote, the State, SIGMA, State Groundwater Sustainability Management Act now says for every gallon you pump out, you get to put a gallon back in. Most cities in California are not going to have that capability that we have, and they're going to have to pay exorbitant water prices down the road. Cities like San Diego, cities on the coast that are building desaternalization plants, their cost was 1,000, 2,000 per acre foot. Our cost is about $100 to $200 an acre foot. We've done that because of a courageous move that included a tea party guy who voted his conscience. It was, as I know, I was talking, it was a tough vote. It was a tough vote for me. We're in the same situation right now. If we don't do what we're supposed to do, it'll continue to go up, and it's a concept, a simple concept, a time and money. As time goes by, things get more expensive. There's a tremendous global boom in the economy. You look at any cost, you look at the cost of a fire station, a police station, I think the Southeast Police Station, Councilman Chavez, was about $6 million a year ago, now it's over $7 million. Everything is going up. The longer we delay, the higher the cost, and ultimately, the higher the cost to the ratepayer. So I'm asking that this council, and I respect the opinions of everybody, and that's our job to be guardians of taxpayers and ratepayers, but I believe this staff has done a great job of putting this presentation together, and we need to do the responsible thing. And all you're doing today really is starting the process. You're not technically voting to start the rates. At the very least, let the people have an opportunity to debate this, and there will be public forums to do this. So I'm urging you to vote, to let this go, and in the end, you can get elected if you made rate increases, I'm one example. So I appreciate the time, council president.
Thank you. Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you. I was debating on whether or not I wanted to say anything, but I think, I think I should say a few things. And I'm the longest-serving councilmember on this board. I have Oliver Baines beat by 30 days, and so I just, I just wanted to share with some folks, I think maybe I can verbalize where I think councilmembers are coming from. I think that, I think as councilmembers in the strong mayor form of government, you see repeatedly, well, you have to do this, you have to vote to raise this fee, because if you don't, the next time, it's going to be worse. And then the next time they come, you say, well, you have to vote to raise this fee, or else the next time, it's going to be worse. And I think that for, at least myself, I don't want to try to speak for my council colleagues, but I think for myself, these votes are very difficult to take, especially as someone who represents a district where the median household income is $26,000, $27,000 a year, and the average household income is $39,000 a year. So I think I would be derelict in my duties as a councilmember to convey to this administration and to convey to my council colleagues that the people in the neighborhoods are hurting, and the people in the neighborhoods feel the squeeze when these kinds of things happen. We've got people out there, northerners in very expensive suits, raising hundreds of thousands of dollars to raise the sales tax, and who's going to pay for it? The people in the neighborhoods are going to pay for it. People at Champlain and Parent, guess what? They can probably afford the, the sales tax increase to pay for the parks thing, but guess what? The people in the neighborhoods, $40, $50 a year, that's groceries, that's gasoline, and so the squeeze continues, the squeeze and the squeeze, and now we're going to do the utility rates and the squeeze and the squeeze and the squeeze. Because of the tale of two cities, and because we have two different cities really that we're trying to govern here, we have a population that doesn't exactly feel that squeeze, and then we have a population that does. So what happens when we raise the water rates, and then the parks measure passes, God forbid, and the other thing passes, and this tax passes, and they're not going to vote to repeal the gas tax and the car registration? Stuff doesn't matter to people who are economically fortunate, but the people in the neighborhoods, the people on East McKenzie and East Washington and East Grant, those people feel the squeeze. I'm going to vote for this today, because the case has been put out there, and I guess it's needed, but the reality is, no, you can chuckle, oh, is that funny? Is it funny? I'm going to vote for it, because it's something that I believe in, that it's something that needs to be done. But I think everyone in this community needs to understand that there, there comes a time when people in our community who are struggling with poverty just can't bear the squeeze any longer. So I've only got a few more days to be here. I'm going to be gone, but I think it's important for the people who remain here, the chatterbox gigglers on the council, and also the people in the administration to realize that, that people in the southern parts of our city are struggling economically, and we have to be very cognizant of that before we raise any taxes or fees on people. Giggles.
Thank you, councilmember Olivier. Are you guys? Anyone?
Well, I'll say, councilmember Olivier, I'm very proud of you in this, in this moment. I did my libertarian values earlier today. You now are showing us your progressive chops, so I'm very, very proud of you in this moment.
I'll, I'll say a few things that are on my mind. Did you punch up, councilman? Okay. I hopefully inspired you, like always. All right. Mayor, I think it's a very, I think it's a bad time for this vote, myself personally. So I agree with everything else you said about the issue, and I agreed with, so that's about two-thirds of what you said. I think it's a very bad time for the vote. Now, we have a lot of stuff that are weighing on the electorate for November, including two or three different passes at taxes here locally, and to, and to add another layer of going out to the public at this time saying that the city of Fresno needs even more, I just think it's a very difficult time. On top of that, we just finished a three-month survey in the city of Fresno, and I don't know if my colleagues were as pounded upon as I was in northwest Fresno about the different water notices and stuff like that. We took quite a brunt of phone calls, and I think, Mayor, you know that, because you and I talked about it privately a couple of times, and we swallowed hard and got through a three-month survey, but we saw a lot of anger and mistrust in the community, and I don't think with everything else that's going on in November, that right now is a particularly good time to take this vote. That's my personal opinion. So, thank you.
Councilmember Bretafell.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I respect my council colleagues who are supporting this, and I understand exactly your position, and I can't dispute where you stand on this. And Councilman Olivier, I, I was very swayed by what you said. I completely agree. I share your exact views that we are overtaxed, that people in your district and other districts, they'll be hit hard by this. And that's, for that reason, that's exactly why I'm not going to support this, because I think we are, as a society, locally, federally, on every, on the state level, completely overtaxed. I mean, whether it's gas taxes, sales taxes, property taxes, raising this fee, raising that fee, now they want no on Measure P, increase the 3/8 cent sales tax for people who are least going to be able to afford it. I can't support these rate hikes. And yes, we can just put it out to, you know, see if people are going to support this, but I think we're here to take important votes. So I respect people who do support this, want to bring it forward, but I always have trouble supporting any kind of rate hikes. I mean, certainly, there's inflation, and I understand that, but you're talking about over five years, raising the rates 20%, approximately, going the total monthly bill from about $97 to $118. That will impact people in a very significant way and in adverse way, and yeah, those of us up here will, will be able to afford it, but I'm thinking about the people who struggle, and I'm thinking about people in this state who are clearly burdened by these taxes and rate hikes and things of that sort, so I can't support it for that reason.
Thank you. I think I'm the last one. I had a number of questions, but I will say that I do agree with the comments that I think have been made across the board from this council in terms of the fact that, yes, we need to be courageous, and guess what? I was courageous in 2015, and I will disagree with the mayor today on it is being unfair to the new councilmembers. I remember sitting here February 25th, I think, 25th of February in 2015, about less than two months having been sworn in, I had to take a very tough vote, and guess what? Councilmembers get elected this November, this election cycle, should be taking those hard votes. That's what they're elected for. That's what we're elected for. And so, one, I, I think, I don't think that it's unfair. I think that that's why they want to be part of the process and part of being engaged. Second of all, I think the timing is huge. I don't disagree with councilmember Brandau. There is no reason why this body and this administration can go out to the public even before initiating the Prop 218 process, very similar to what happened in 2014, giving the information before initiating and sending ballots on October 20th, just two, two weeks shy of an election that is looming. Very inappropriate for me to say, especially when, with someone that prides himself with public engagement and people knowing, people are preoccupied with a million other things to do. So in terms of timing, for me, I don't think it's the best timing. A couple of things also. When I, when I took my courageous vote in 2015 on the water deal, we made promises to the public. We made promises that we would do cost savings and extend the time that we would raise the rates. So a couple of things that I feel we haven't done, and I don't, I haven't seen anything come before us yet that demonstrates that we're going to keep these promises. I still, I'm waiting for a PPA agreement for maybe solar to reduce energy costs for our wastewater treatment plant and for our other treatment plants. I want to see energy cost projects that will help these rates. We haven't done any of that. So I want to see that as part of this rate proposal. I think those should be things that should be included. I wanted to ask, we have gas out of our wastewater. Have we taken into account those $2 to $4 million revenues? Have those been factored in into the wastewater rate plan? And how will they, I want to be able to understand all that, because that wasn't part of the, the explanation that I saw.
Yes, I think you're talking about the digester gas.
Yes, the digester.
That is generated at the facility. And so I'll remind you that for quite a period of time, the digester gas was utilized to, to power a, a power generation facility. It generated electricity, and that, that electricity was used within the wastewater treatment facility to offset, offset operational costs. That facility was decommissioned in 2017, so we made that decision. Along with that, we, we moved forward with a, a plan to build a gas diversion pipeline that's currently in design. It's part of our rate plan, and we are working with PG&E on an interconnection with their system so that we can push the, the biomethane into the PG&E pipeline and generate revenues. It's, it's still the same process, but rather than use the gas internally and generate electricity, we will sell it on the market. So, so these rate plans do incorporate the use and the savings of that digester gas that historically been used at that facility.
How much is that taken into account in terms of the rates?
What's the exact number? I don't have the exact number of what it is, but I think, I think we do know that when, when we took the generation facility offline, our electric bills, I'm going to look back here, but I think our electric bills jumped about 30%. So, so our electric bill did jump, so we were receiving about a 30%, we lowered our electric, electric bill about 30% with the operation of that facility. Now, we did decommission it, and the plan is to generate revenues by selling the biogas.
So, but what amount? Because if you're proposing rates, you would have calculated an amount into this. So what, what is that? I, I would like to know what that, that amount is. So maybe if, if this doesn't pass today, I, I still like that information.
Yeah, and I think part of that is to, we have to move forward with the pipeline, we have to negotiate the contract with PG&E, then we have to broker the gas on the market, and the market's constantly fluctuating. So we can, we can anticipate a number, we can work on that, but yeah, I mean, what's the exact?
That's what I'm trying to get at, though, because you're proposing rates based on a study, and if study and if we don't have the number of the revenues, how are you going to make any projections? What, what are those revenues being projected as?
So in fiscal year, starting fiscal year 22, we are projecting three million dollars in revenues from bio generation credit sales.
Okay, and so those-
So that is incorporated in here.
Okay. I wanted to make sure because I didn't see that anywhere in, as part of the information. The other thing, um, with waste discharge, I know that we're going to have to go to a permit and we're going to have to comply with the nitrate, the new state's nitrate standards, which is going to require us with new technology. Um, I know that there's going to be an opportunity or there are opportunities for us to kind of negotiate ten-year periods that will help, that could help these rate. So I, before, uh, supporting any, um, rate increases, I want to see us and understand how we're, how all these pieces are working together to be able to, um, ensure that our rates don't go up as high, um, at least i- in my, in my perspective. So that's, that's another thing that I was, um, concerned about. The last thing, um, that I will share, going back to kind of the energy savings. So where are we with doing any projects? Have we've gone back to RFP? Because I would like us to really see that happen, um, to make sure that our rates don't go up as high.
Yeah, I think we've incorporated a number of energy reduction projects and we talked about the power generation facility and the transition to a diversion pipeline. On top of that, you know, I, I think, um, I think it's difficult to, to, um, to see these projects in terms of energy reduction, but we constructed the Friant Kern Canal Pipeline project. That was an energy savings project and, and it actually received a one million dollar grant from the Bureau of Reclamation. It's a Water Smart Energy Efficiency Grant because it allowed us to shut off the raw water pumps, uh, which are the largest energy demand at the northeast Surface Water Treatment Facility. That project is completed, it's online, those pumps are off and we are saving power. Uh, in addition to that, the surface water, the southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility allows us to shut off half the wells across the city. There is a net savings by shutting those off. That savings has been incorporated into these plans. But I'll remind you that all these projects re- require an upfront capital investment. There is a long-term savings, there's a long-term return on investment, they don't eliminate rates, but what they do over the long period of time is reduce the impact of those rates. They lower them to a certain degree. And so those projects are incorporated into this rate plan and I think that's why we can come forward with, uh, with new rates, especially for two of our divisions that have not had rate increases in over ten years and still provide very low impact, very incremental rate increases. And I think that's a testament to the staff running these divisions and making sure they're doing it efficiently and incorporating cost savings projects.
But we could do more because we still don't have at least, or I, I don't know where in the, in the information that you provided that these energy savings were provided. I know with wastewater, we can do, you know, some energy projects. I know I've heard from tons of different companies that are willing to do the capital investments so that we don't have to do it. So there's still some options out there that I think that we haven't completely explored. We've had, I will be honest, we've had three and a half years and we haven't done anything. And so that's where I feel, I can't look my residents in the eyes and say, I'm going to, you know, support moving forward with this process when we haven't moved in the direction, um, to do that in the three and a half year period. We had enough time to go look at energy saving costs and we haven't. And so that, that's an issue that, that I do have. Another issue that I, that I have, I have an issue with the senior, the, the senior, uh, rates. I love the fact that you guys are going to do the low income, uh, program, which gives more flexibility, but now we're putting the onerous on residents, um, that typically would have expect, would have had, uh, a savings. And so that creates an issue for me too, because I know that we haven't really done a really good job of doing the outreach to get people that would qualify for our low income program. If we think about the rate, the rate of poverty in our community, forty percent of people in our city are living below poverty. And when we only have two thousand accounts in the low income program, to me, the, in, in three and a half years, that's a problem. So I want to make sure that before I go back out and ask my residents to pay more, that we have really crossed our Ts and dotted our Is and can really go back to them and say, you know what? We've done every, um, everything we could, um, to do that. The last thing that, um, I wanted to know about is the, the Department of Public Utilities, um, yard or the building that you guys-
Yeah, the DPU facility.
The DPU facility. Do we really have to do it? Do we really have to do it? Because I've spoken to people, um, that are, have a history of being with the city and people that have said, we can continue to operate from out of those facilities. Maybe the, it's not the most convenient, maybe it's not the most comfortable because, you know, the space is still limited, but I really want to know, why do we have to build a fifty-plus million?
Yeah, I, I would say a prime example of that, most obvious example is, for example, the water division has been operating out of the same facility since nineteen fifty-seven. So I would encourage you to come out, take a look at those facilities, see how it operates. And for the long term, I don't think we can continue to operate out of that facility without patching it up, without implementing temporary solutions that allow for, uh, allow for that operation to continue to meet the needs of our customers. In addition, uh, the solid waste, uh, division has been operating out of Municipal Service Center since nineteen seventies. And the space that they operate, operate on today is actually smaller than what they used to operate on in the past. And so we have, the city has grown, our customer base has grown, and yet we operate on less space. And this investment in DPU facility not only supports our operations going forward, it also allows the general funded operations to reutilize that space. So it lessens the impact that they have to make and an investment they have to make into the facilities at the Municipal Service Center so they can continue their operations into the future. So, so it supports both sides, the enterprise funds as well as the general fund. So if you, if you want to come out and take a look, I mean, I encourage you, we'll set it up, we'll go out and look at those.
I'd love, I'd love to do that because I think for me, understanding and seeing, um, on the ground really what the, what the issues are would be much more convincing than just saying, okay, we're going to build this, you know, fifty million dollar and the rate payers obviously have to foot the bill for it.
At the university site, we just purchased the auto body shop next door. I mean, those are the temporary type of solutions that we have to work with. It's another fifty-year-old building that we're going to, we're going to put a fresh coat of paint on and we're going to go forward with that because those are the options we're working with.
Okay. Um, then, I think those were all the questions that I had. Yeah, tho- those are all the questions that I had in terms, my, my questions were much more in particular with the wastewater and, and, and the water. And so, at, at least at this time, because of the timing and still some of the other questions that, that I raised and the concerns, I cannot support moving forward. I would actually request that we use this opportunity to begin to engage the community and to let folks know, you know, the intent, uh, of this body. I know that today is the last day that, um, this council can vote to be able to accomplish the vote, um, by the end of the, of twenty eighteen and I don't want to be hurried up. I don't. I don't want to be, feel rushed. I want to be able to have enough time to be able to go have my community meetings with my residents before even in- initiating this whole process and having you guys come out with me to explain to them everything that is happening. I'm, I'm okay with taking tough votes. I've, I've done it many times, but I also want to make sure that we, we are letting the public know. And it doesn't preclude us from having these, the schedule of rates go up as you guys are proposing. It's just that this council today would not be the council to approve the process. So we could still come back in January or February and initiate the process or we could even initiate the process, uh, in, before the end of the year. Uh, maybe after the election cycle, may, after November sixth. I think that would probably be prudent in my, in my perspective to start the, the Prop 218 process and then conclude it sometime in the first couple of months of the year. That way you guys are still with the same schedule. So, um, I'm open, but for today, I am not going to be supportive of the existing timeline. I want to be able to understand all that and make sure that we are using every single way, um, to ensure that these rates, um, are the lowest, um, possible being proposed to, to our residents. And so with that, um, those are all my comments and concerns. Thank you. Did you punch up?
Yeah.
Because it's not showing up. Councilmember Baines.
Thanks, Council President. And I just wanted to, and I wanted to li- listen to some of the, uh, opposition and then ask, ask whoever's willing to comment some questions because here's, and I was just sharing with my good Tea Party friend, Steve Brandow, that what I, I did not hear from any person that chose to speak in opposition to this vote today was the disagreement that our community needs these infrastructure investments in our wastewater system. I didn't hear that. I heard we need more time or we want to do it a different time, now's not the right time.
Well, we don't know. I'm still going to go check.
Huh?
I said, I still don't know because I'm going to go check the facilities myself.
Well, the facilities are a very small part of the pack, the entire package. So while I, I can understand the, the whole point about a, a single facility, that's a, a, a drop in the bucket compared to the entire infrastructure package that our department is asking us for. And so what I didn't hear from my colleagues was a reason that we're really going to vote no. If we don't think it's the right time, then why don't we tell the administration what our timing is? When do we want them to bring it back so we can actually do the right thing for our residents here and have, and, and have the type of infrastructure that we need? Because if it's just about not being the right time and we don't disagree with the investments that are being made, then when should we, when should we bring it back? I mean, should we do it after November, after the elections are over so that people aren't confused about the ballots? I mean, do we do it the week after the elections? Do we do it the first week in January when a new council is set? I, I'm, I'm just curious because I didn't hear disagreement with the needs of this community based off of what the department is telling us. And-
Councilmember Baines, I actually did offer, um, that, I actually said that this is a great opportunity for us to begin the discussion out in the public and I said, it would be prudent in my perspective to initiate the Prop 218 process after the election. It could be after November or it could be first of the year, but it doesn't preclude us, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, it doesn't preclude us from starting to go out to the public to explain to them and educate them about what we are doing. I think it's in term of the, the, the timing for today, so I would like to see that timing extended.
Okay. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that the administration heard that and that the department heard that, that at least according to one member who's not inclined to support this today, that if you come back after the elections, then potentially, uh, there could be some support there because again, we need to do the work. The work needs to be done. And the longer that we procrastinate and, and it, you know, it gets, and it gets, uh, you know, I'm on my way out, so I get the chance to say these kind of things. I mean, it, I don't, I just don't get it. We know that we need to do it and yet we're just going to wait, wait longer to take more time. So if, if we come back after the election and, or the beginning of the year when a new council is set, then I could su- support that, but, but other than that, I think people are being disingenuous. And I think that we need to really be able to articulate, we, we, we have to have solutions. We know, we know we need this work done. We know that this community deserves and requires these types of investments. We know that operating our, our multi, our multitude of utility systems is not cost-neutral. We know that there are, are, are going to be rate increases every now and then. And instead of, we're already at ten years on the wastewater s- treatment system, well, eight years right now, and it won't be ten years until they get a rate increase. So I just think that we, we are slowly but surely follow, falling into the same type of mentality that got us in this first, this situation the first time where many of us had to take, a couple of us, I know everyone didn't have to take that vote, but I remember having to take that vote and it was agonizing. And I wish that other councils would not have just kicked it to us to have to do it to where we were literally in a state where if we didn't make these decisions and we didn't do it in the time that we did, we could have been like the city of Los Angeles where they actually had pipes bursting because our pipes are as old as theirs were. We have this situation again with our wastewater system where our department has told us, we have pipes that are fragile and ready to, ready to be burst and, and here we are talking about, now's not the right time. And so I hope that this council finds it within them to find the right time to make these types of investments and tell the truth to our community about what it takes to actually have a, a, a system that delivers the, the type of services that they require. I don't think that our rates are overburdened. I like the fact that it's a measured approach as far as the, um, the incremental rate increases. I think that that's a much better approach than we did last time. I think that this is, that this makes a lot more sense. So, uh, I, I get that this probably doesn't have the support to pass today. I probably won't be here when it comes back, but, but just know that, you know, uh, well, I, I, I know, I know you aren't my friend. We, we won't be. We'll be gone, but, but I just, I just hope my colleagues, uh, think long and hard about the, the obligations and duties that they have to make sure that if we're going to say no, that we have a solution, that we have a solution to the problem. And I, and the administration, I think you've heard loud and clear that this, this body is mentioned by councilmembers Soria, or Council President Soria and Brandow, believe that the community need to be, talk to more about this. I can't disagree with that. I'm always, uh, you know, encouraging of community dialogue, so I would suggest that there's some, you know, community forums and community meetings that can be set up and arranged so that you guys, when you come back to this body, the case has been made that you've checked all the boxes.
Yeah, if I could just, just offer one reminder, um, and if you could, uh, put the schedule back up on the screen. The decision today is to initiate that public participation process. We set the schedule and our recommendation is that we send the mailers out on the twenty-second and, and schedule the public hearing for December sixth. But we could, rather than come back, go through this discussion again, we could, uh, push out the mailer to after the general election and we could set the public hearing for a future date in 2019. So we, we have that flexibility through this process because we determined the schedule. So I just wanted to remind you and let you know that that's, that's an option that is-
I appreciate it, Michael. I, I, I'm not the one that you got to convince on that, but, you know, I, so anyhow, uh, those are my comments, Council.
Thank you. So electronic vote? Cindy? There, there is a motion, um, on the table by Councilmember Baines and a second by Councilmember Capriolio. A motion, the motion, or a yes vote would support the administration's proposal, no vote would oppose it. Motion fails. So now, the last thing on our agenda is the closed session, I believe. So City Attorney, did you want to?
Yes. Uh, in closed session, we have labor negotiations, uh, concerning ATU, uh, deciding whether to initiate litigation, Fresno and Sticky Fingers, Peoples Cure One, Oz Eighty-Eight and Greenleaf, and then also potential litigation, Schaefer versus City of Fresno. There will not be any announcement afterwards, will not be coming back out.